Before we do start, is there any additions to the agenda as it stands?
I'm trying to think of a phrase for this. I need to add an item. I just need a brief discussion related to a formality for approving Larson for the audit for the IDA. There is a bit of a calendar issue in completing the audit. And Ken, I may need your help here. I'm thinking that... The problem is that Larson, because they've not done an audit of the IDA, does not know the extent of the building. We have been approved to be dealt with under the county's RFP process, so the selection of them is appropriate. But the amount may exceed procurement guidelines, so I need some type of direction, possibly with limitations, in order to engage them from a financial standpoint before we either come back to the board or call an emergency meeting to consider that amount of money. Now, they have usual and standard contracted amounts, and I just need some approval guidance or language from the board to deal with that issue. Ken, you want to address any of that?
Do you have any idea what kind of dollars you're talking about, no range or anything?
The IDA runs around $4,000 a year. I am thinking that we can engage them certainly for around $10,000. But the procurement guidelines for me to do that are captured by...
So you're saying without giving authorization?
You could give me authorization for 10, and if it goes above 10, it'll certainly be justifiable by their billing rates that are already approved on their agreement with the county. And if it goes above 10, then we will... I'll just have to call an emergency meeting and get additional approval.
And it'll be twice what the...
There's two years. There's two years, and we have significant... I say significant, we have more individual transactions. Is that a typical run-of-the-mill way that that runs, Mike? So I'm just guessing on a pro-rata basis that it may run as much as $10,000.
Okay. Way of that is tab 10, authorization...
Or deal with it now.
We'll do a tab 10.
Okay.
Okay. We're adding to the agenda. We now have tab 10, which is authorization for procurement, product services. I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition. Joe made a motion, and Vanessa second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll move forward. First is Easy Products International. If you'd please come forward and make your presentation. Can I go over here? That would be great. Yes, sir.
I don't have a detailed... Do you agree?
Not yet.
It's okay. I don't have a detailed presentation for you because I've been in front of you guys several times before. You've got my business plan. I turned in all the quotations to Bill a couple of weeks ago, and I believe it's been distributed to you all. But there's two items on the agenda that we need to get rolling on for me. One of them is the funding of the safety certification testing of our ECL product, which is being done by Product Safety Engineering in Dade City. Do you guys have information on that?
Is that the quote for $30,052?
No, it's a little less than that.
About $20,000 to $40,000.
Mr. Quo... The total on it is $26,409.25.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Twenty-six... boom. $26,409.25.
Okay, thank you. I believe on our documents that we have in front of us, initially it had an amount requested 20, then there was a finalized quote, which was a little higher, $30,052, and then now you have a more set quote of the $26,409.25.
Yeah, that was correct.
Okay. Is everybody following? Okay. Is there anything else you would like to add so that the board... any other information that you feel would be good for us?
Well, the $26,000 that you're authorizing is paying for that. That's the compliance sticker that we can place on our machines, which will allow us to sell machines internationally into U.S., Canada, 36 European countries, as well as Australia and New Zealand.
Okay. Does any of the board members have questions that they would like to ask at this time?
I think David has presented this stuff before, as he said, and has covered all these things to us before. This is, I guess, just for finalized approval or not.
I don't think you've voted on it for approval before.
No, we have not voted on it, but this is... you have told us about this before. I mean, you've explained these things before and what they're about and doing and that type thing. It's my understanding.
I have a machine here. If you'd like to see that again, I can bring it up for you.
I don't think that's necessary for us unless anybody has the desire.
We saw it.
Okay.
So just to clarify, this will enable you to open up to overseas sales, basically, so that you would be able to expand your business for international sales?
Yes, that's correct. Now, this is not a magic wand. We're not going to end up with thousands of dollars a week coming in from overseas tomorrow morning. This is going to enable us to spend more money developing our overseas market. But we have some business that we can get in the short term, which is really exciting.
We have in front of us, I believe, is it two requests today? One for this item?
And one for the building.
One for the building. And if I... from what I have read, are you seeking approval for the renovation of a building as opposed to building a new building?
That's correct.
Okay. So we do...
I have not. We obtained a quotation for building a new building, basically at Bill's request, because we wanted to have a comparison, let's say, cost per square feet versus old versus new. And it is not my intention to go down the path of a new building unless you don't approve of renovation of the old building.
Okay. Any other discussions in regards to what we have in front of us as far as the two proposals? If there...
The proposal for the rehabilitation of the old building, Orangewood, as you could probably see from the information that I gave you, has the lowest bid.
Yes, sir. Do you have something?
The tunnel renovation costs. I'm looking for my... there it is. But this needs to be two separate motions, I would probably say.
Yes, I think so. It's... there are two separate requests, the way it's laid out, and I think, yes, it would be one, two separate motions. Just for the board members' information, we have... we can make a number of actions here. One is to accept the proposal, two is to reject the proposal, the third is to approve and allow our director to negotiate the finalization of the projects. And at this time, I would... if there is a motion, I would ask for that.
I'll make a motion to approve for the director to start negotiations on the procurement of the machines.
I have a motion from Joe for the director to start negotiations to procure money for the machine.
That's not what you're asking, is it?
No, I have... all the negotiations for this thing are done.
It's done.
We have to file invoices. I've turned them in to the IDA, and we're looking for approval to pay the bill.
Which we said we would.
To pay for them.
Make a motion to approve to pay the man's bill, and we already said we would for the machine that needs to go overseas.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the certification of the machine, or pay for the certification of the machine. The amount is $26,409.25.
Correct.
Do I have a second to that motion? Vanessa Hernandez seconds the motion. All in favor signify... well, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Make sure the record indicates that I've seen.
Lori Durans has abstained from the vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have... do we have a motion for the renovations?
I have an additional question to ask. The building that you're looking at is in downtown Wachula, is that correct?
Two twenty-six West Main.
Okay.
Jim C.'s building.
Okay. Has there been any discussion with Main Street about CRA funds or anything along those lines to help with the renovation of the building?
There has been, but it's not clear to me how the funds flow through this. Seems to me it's all the same money, and it comes out different spigots on the funnel. I don't understand all that.
Okay.
You may ask that question.
Yes.
Bill, it might be a good idea to explain how that money would flow.
Which money?
For the renovation. Are there any more?
My recommendation would be to consider flowing this money through the CRA. The reason I say that is that the CRA's procurement guidelines are much easier to work with. It is unclear to me exactly what procurement guidelines we would use in this particular instance. I'm not saying that we couldn't do it, or that it'd be inappropriate. It just, you know, this is one of those buildings that I really feel like should have been primarily considered by the CRA, but they obviously have some other items on their agenda that they had previously prioritized. So unfortunately, if Mr. Brown is going to be able to consummate his business relationship with the city of Wachula, we have to intervene. I would expect down the road at some point in time, political compromise could be worked out where the CRA figured out some other way to remunerate us or compensate us otherwise for our contribution in this particular situation. There are some issues here. They're not big issues, but at some point, we need to have some open and frank dialogue between the city and the IDA, board of county commissioners, on the philosophy of where this money flows. So, you know, if you choose to fund him, we can administer it from the Industrial Development Authority office, but if you would like it to flow through the CRA, just give us permission to investigate as part of negotiation to flow it through the CRA. And if there's a problem that the attorney for the CRA and the IDA runs into, they're uncomfortable with, I'll either come back for a modification in agreement, or we'll move it forward. Is that clear? Does that answer your question?
Yes, we have a timeframe here, I think. Mr. Brown has a timeframe.
I would expect, though, that if you choose to award the money in a formal situation today, that that formal award could be recognized for any real estate transactions or banking transactions, contractual commitments, et cetera. You look uncomfortable as a bank...
No, I'm not. I'm a reasons guy. I abstain from the first, but I'll abstain from the second. Deacon is what this is.
Is that clear? One other point of note, I would ask, from a procedural standpoint, that Mr. Brown is an exception because he has been working with the IDA for months now, trying to work out a situation with his business. What I would suggest, after you do whatever you're going to do with him relative to funding, then move forward and hear all of the other proposals, and then take up the debate for funding. Okay?
Okay. I'm sorry, I do have one additional question. There are, I believe, five or... is it four or five bids?
Four.
Four. And there is a range.
Correct. The range is from four hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and ten thousand, nine ninety-seven.
Okay, so is the one been modified? I had one that was seven thousand, nine thousand, seven oh three.
That price did not include items eighteen and nineteen on my spreadsheet.
Okay. So with the inclusion of those, what would that final bid be?
Two hundred and ten thousand, nine ninety-seven. That includes all that, all rehab the building, including the metal roof.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure as far as do we desire to make a motion to approve, to hold this till the end as Mr. Lambert has suggested, to negotiate and to discuss the final approvals, or what's the board's pleasure on this one?
Mr. Chairman, one more point of note that I think you need to understand. These estimates were for the basis of establishing a grant award. He will not be bound to use any of those. I mean, he can go back into the marketplace once you establish the grant. I had asked him to go into the marketplace and procure for you some idea of what new construction would be, what a master retrofit of the building would be, what a medium and low-end retrofit would be. You have those various categories to consider the funding amount for the building. At the end of the day, it'll be Mr. Brown's building. He's the one that has to really decide how he's going to, you know, finish this building up. It will be his responsibility. He'll be making payments on the building. So I'm thinking that if you just use those numbers as a reference point, five hundred thousand high-end to two hundred thousand and some change for remodeling to meet his needs, that gives you a basis of reference. When you choose an amount of money, then he will have to come back. If he uses the CRA guidelines, they set forth very clearly how he is to obtain bids for that building. That's one of the reasons that I prefer to use those guidelines in this particular instance.
Well, how would our board approve? If we're so inclined, how would our board approve?
We'll have to have more specificity in the grant award. Have to have more detail.
All right.
Unless we adopt the CRA guidelines, I apologize, but we would have to do that.
Okay. So how do we move on this today if we do not have that answer?
You do, as I asked you earlier, that is to direct the money to be awarded through the CRA, if it's available, after legal perusal by Ken Evers and the city's attorney. And in the event that something happens there, I will come back to you with a solution.
But typically, there's a monetary amount that you would attach to that approval.
And at this point, you can make a subjective or objective opinion, depending on the analysis of the information in front of you, and decide where you want to fund it. And if you feel that Mr. Brown needs to dig deeper into his pockets and put additional money in you, you know, you can fund from a dollar or zero to five hundred thousand.
Well, our point is, of course, that we... if we're doing this, this is for job creation, and we don't want to do something that is not going to be effective and create those jobs and allow Mr. Brown to bring that activity downtown as far as a new business or existing business and actually expand it. So I... Mr. Brown, is there a limit, some type of limit that you would like for us to consider as far as within this range of bids? Is there a high limit that you think would be appropriate?
I haven't thought about this. There's a couple of scary things in the rehabilitation of an old building. Once we tear off the ceilings in the building, we might find something. I don't think we're going to find anything electricity, and the electricity is so old, we're replacing it all. But there's a little bit of scary things about the roof. I don't think there's going to be a 100% cost overrun, but there could be a 20,000 or 30,000 or $40,000 overrun based on what we find in the roof. If I had to put a safety net out there that would make me happy under all circumstances, I would say a $50,000 safety net ought to do it.
So that brings probably the median cost about $300,000. If you look at... there's two in the 250 range, one at 242, and one at 210. So an upper limit of 300 would cover most of those circumstances. Would that be correct?
I would think that's correct. The construction people could answer that question better than I can, but from my non-construction standpoint, I think it's good.
They'll always come back in. That's correct. Mr. Durans pointed out, there could be a supplemental request later on if there was some change or if they required it, that could come to the IDA. Okay. Is there any further discussion from the board members?
I just had a couple of comments. You know, I look at this request similar to the request that we had in regards to the Sears building, and we discussed the importance at that time of investing in downtown. It's beneficial to all of our area businesses to invest in downtown. That would be the only consideration that I would want to know what the CRA's plan for downtown, and if your business fits in with their plan for downtown. So from my perspective, I favor helping rehab downtown. However, I would have liked to know what they would like to see as far as from the CRA's point of view, if this type of business fits into their plan for downtown.
We've had a lot of discussion with that at the CRA meetings, with Billy and zoning and everybody, and everyone seems to be in favor of it. But if you want CRA's opinion, you really have to ask them and not me.
Any other discussion or comments? Entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion to allow $300,000 through the CRA with Ken Evers and the city's attorney to review for the renovation of the building.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
You want to make that motion up to 300?
Yes. Not to exceed.
I'll second.
Mike Manley seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I abstain.
I abstain. Two extensions noted. All are in favor, so the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is under tab two, Blue Water. Do we have representatives for Blue Water to present?
Yes.
If you prefer the table.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you all for having us. J.B. Grant, representing Blue Water, Travis Bond, the CEO and founder of Life Dash. And what we have brought you this morning, and first of all, we'd like to thank you for the graciousness this community has extended and the opportunity to be here. What we are working on and what we would like to partner with the county in doing is providing data ownership and data collaboration to users in a way that has never been done. And what I mean by that is when we look at the marketplace right now, when we look at the way each of us at our personal or even familial level handle data, it's fragmented, it's orphaned, it's often left unused, and ultimately never realized in the market from a job generation, economic development growth, but more importantly to us on the individual level, the convenience of that data collaboration, whether that be to first responders, whether that be to individual family members, to dependents that I care for, or for just the ease of convenience. And we've prepared just a quick little presentation. You all have it in front of you. That is just a snapshot of what Blue Water is. We have partnered with Life Dash. Life Dash, and you will hear from Travis Bond shortly, but Life Dash is the platform on which we are built. To put that in bricks and mortar terms, the pipe has been laid, the roads have been paved, and it's now time to build bricks and mortar inside the city. The reason we have partnered with Life Dash is because, and I will leave most of that to Travis, but we have a very unique opportunity to capitalize on technology that quite frankly is not in the marketplace right now, and allows us, inside of a partnership, to develop technologies in a way that users have never and empower users in a way that they have never been empowered. We addressed quickly, but when you look at what the problems are right now in the market, we all have fragmented identities, and whether that is a work email account versus a personal email account, whether that is a Facebook profile versus a LinkedIn profile. Right now, everything we have online is owned by somebody else. It's capitalized on by somebody else. I never own it. I am putting stuff online in a way that I want to be perceived or in a way that I believe others want me to be perceived. But at no point have I ever been able to fully utilize my data, digitalize it, own it, and control who can see what and when and how and under what circumstances. That lack of data ownership, I think, is one of the largest contributors to the fact that most of us are okay with some of this data dying. We don't feel comfortable investing in something that's not ours. We don't feel comfortable, or we don't get the value out of investing in something that will quickly be shared or that we will quickly lose. One example of that, when you look at health insurance providers right now who have a patient portal, it's all well and good as long as I stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield for me to upload my data, my lab results and all those things. But as soon as my employer changes from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Edmond Humana United, any other carrier, I've lost that data, and I no longer own it. And so as a user, I have this perception that it's not worth my time because at some point, the system will change, or I will change, and I'll lose that data. The collaboration is something that I think we are truly, truly excited on, and the ability to create real-time data, whether that be in the disease management side, whether that be in the pharmaceutical world, to tie up a number of real-time statistics that I think, quite frankly, could save this country. statistics, uh, that I think quite frankly, uh, could save, uh, this country, uh, our state, uh, and what we look at in, in the healthcare arena alone, uh, and the insurance arena of, of alone, if we are able to finally empower users to create data, to, uh, compare that data, uh, to use that data and to profit from that data, um, we think that, uh, we, we strongly believe that that is, um, a, a key component of what we're trying to do. How we solve it? We have, and I'll show you, you will see a, a picture of this in just a second, but Blue Water is a web-based solution that allows the aggregation and collaboration of data for me to securely and encrypted fashion, uh, put in data that I want stored in a central location, but that I may want different people to see. And, and the easiest example of that is first responders. I probably want firefighters and fire dispatch to know how many people sleep in my house. I want them to know, uh, if I have a sick child or a sick grandparent or parent that's sleeping in my living room because I've just come home from the hospital. But I don't necessarily not want my daughter's, uh, teacher to know that at school. I don't necessarily want the ER nurse to know that. Uh, and so the ability to collaborate that data and manipulate who is able to see it based on where they're coming from, uh, may mean the difference in, uh, in, uh, somebody being walked over, uh, in a fire, uh, and somebody being rescued in a fire without jeopardizing the user's security, the user's privacy and, and their protection. The Blue Water card will be a, a key component of what we do in conveying to first responders, health professionals, uh, schools, any other organization, uh, that somebody is in fact a Blue Water user, that that technology does in fact exist and that they can go through the proper channels to access it when necessary. We would use a number of indicators. You may or may not have heard of the Yellow Dot program started in the Northeast. You're starting to see some states in the Southeast, uh, adopted on the first responder side. Their technology effectively is a yellow dot on your license tag and it is a wad of paper in your, um, glove box. And so that if you are in an accident, first responder sees a yellow dot, uh, they know to check the glove box for a stack of papers. There are a number of problems with that model, not the least of which is whether or not the, the paper actually makes it to glove box, uh, not the least of which is whether or not the glove box can open, but I think most importantly is, as soon as we get away from the digitalization of data and we quit empowering users, that data is out of date the moment that ink dries on that paper. And so as we look at the solutions that are, that are in the marketplace right now, I think there are, there really, it's fair to say there are no solutions and that we really are just scratching the surface. And the only way that we will empower users, uh, to manage this data, share this data and, and, um, and capitalize on the power of the data is to enable them both in a web, mobile and real-time fashion, uh, to access and manage that data and who sees it and when. That's just a quick, uh, graphic of, of what we're explaining, but you'll notice that we have, uh, kind of the core, the bottom is, is the vault, that is the, uh, encryption, the database, uh, where I have stored all of my orphaned inside of the data. Um, I've now brought it into a place where it's together, it's easy for me to use and it's convenient, but inside of that I have these many vaults or many safes, uh, that are the ability to compartmentalize that data movement, um, and show it to a healthcare provider, first responder, or any other, uh, organization or entity, uh, looking to see it. As far as our market strategy and distribution, uh, those five bubbles represent what we strongly believe and are in the process of, of, of working with and, uh, and pursuing, uh, the market distribution. You will have families and individuals who will say, I want that. I want the ease of convenience to know that I can manage, uh, certain forms before I go to the doctor. I, I want the ease and convenience of knowing that, uh, if my child is at school and, and tragedy happens, that my teachers have up-to-date information on their allergies, their prior conditions, their previous conditions, uh, their emergency contacts, anything that needs to be known, I want to know that's there and individuals will, individuals will certainly be a, um, a, a key component of the marketing strategy. From a quick implementation and a first phase, uh, certainly the healthcare providers in the insurance industry, uh, when you look at the cost cutting that can be done in real-time, uh, through mobile technology, uh, one example of these, a health insurance provider being able to push by mobile technology, um, a questionnaire to me after I've left my doctor to say that is, you know, this is what you were built and it's put in language terms for me to understand. I know when I was built and I know that, uh, with a sinus infection, I shouldn't have been built for a wheelchair and I never walked out the door with a wheelchair. We can empower the users, uh, to let insurance companies know that, you know, I, I wasn't charged for that. And I think at the core of humanity is the fact that none of us want to be used, uh, as a tool in fraud and none of us want to, um, be taken advantage of from that same point. But that is a quick, and, and that slide is in your presentation, uh, when you look at the reasons, I know I'm showing up a little bit blurry on the large screen, but the reasons in, the reasons for which those industries, uh, make sense. Our revenue forecast, uh, if we only look at the, uh, if we only look at the usership side and, and not the, uh, advertising revenue. The advertising revenue is a key component of the legal strategy and the reason I say that is, um, there is currently nothing in the marketplace, uh, that allows us to take legal documents, whether it be a healthcare, healthcare powered attorney, a HIPAA release, a durable powered attorney, a living will, a DNR, any of those documents. There are companies right now digitally storing, uh, they're not doing it securely, they're not doing it in any way that they can be shared other than, uh, picking up a phone and going along that. Our love form, uh, originally used some of them. Uh, clients appreciated the notion of them, but quickly came back to us saying, if I lose this card, all of my information will, will, is gone. The ad revenue generated in that component as well as the pharmaceutical side and with partners is not incorporated into our revenue, uh, projections, but that is on a $5 per member per month, uh, fee for service. And so you, you look at that. What we are looking for in the partnership with Hardy County, um, is to, um, help get the, the ball rolling on the technology part that we have talked about with, with, with some of the people. We would like to be able to be the poster child, uh, for the investment you've made with Rapid Systems, uh, for the internet assets that you have here. We would like to be tenement one, uh, to come in and say that, that what this community is doing and, and what, uh, investments having already been made in technology, uh, it became very clear to us early on, um, when we were looking at where are we going to locate, um, our operations, where are we going to be based out of? There were, there were certainly technological criteria, um, but the message from Hardy County has been loud and clear that we are willing to invest and we see the, the future in technology and the jobs it can create. And so we, we anticipate that our, our all need, uh, in the first three years to, uh, see the partnership go from the launch of, uh, Blue Water on the LifeDash platform, uh, to the creation of the technology park, uh, is 7.25 million dollars. We know that, uh, we have budgeted, uh, to get off the ground 2.5 million dollars. Uh, we feel like, um, that puts us in a place where we are able, uh, to get a product to marketplace, generate revenue, and more importantly, see the partnership continue to go. But with that, I will turn it over to Travis Bond, CEO of LifeDash.
I want to echo what, um, Jamie had said and thank you for your time and for the opportunity. When Jamie first came and told me about Hardy County and the programs that were available here, um, you know, I listened intently because it really didn't make sense. And so let me kind of tell you my background and what he means when he says platform. For, um, for the last year plus, I am a serial one. My last company was in electronic medical records and knew the industry very, very well. We sold to publicly traded company for in excess of 40 million dollars. Um, so I've been from the private, taking it all the way to something that, that was publicly traded on the stock exchange. In, in that sort of understanding what people wanted to do from the patient side and provider side, many of the things that we saw was a dichotomy. It was that, you know, a patient was always sort of subservient to the physician and how that physician controlled their data. And that, and, and I started to see sort of a revolution that was happening and what was really going on was a second entity called the internet, which is really almost like a second world. We just virtually inhabit it instead of real. And when you find that you go on and you use the internet, the number two search is healthcare-related for all users in terms of the number of times that the, the internet is hit. And so you ask yourself really, what is the shifts in our society? And when you look at the enormous profound impact that Facebook has had, you really realize that it's only photo sharing and status sharing. This is what I'm doing, here are my friends and I want to stay in contact. But when you find that, when you look at the demographics within the social platform, the only one that is actually going down negative, meaning they're losing more users than they're gaining, is users between 30 and 45. And the reason is, is because now, once you get into that age group, you will start to, as a real human being, have multiple personas. You become a business owner, you become a husband, a wife, you become, you know, more of a, of a dependent child because your, your parents are now sort of kind of, roles are shifting a little bit. You might have, you know, children that are, that have some ailment because now you're all of a sudden kind of this, um, very involved healthcare and sharing it. You may have a business, you may be, um, you know, part of the different hobbies and so forth. In each of those different contexts, you know how to behave because you, every day you grow to perfect how you shift from one role to the next, but when you go onto the internet, because Facebook and others have been set up to monetize your data, they don't respect the fact that you want to have conversations within context. So as a result, all the information that you're giving them, they're reselling to other people to primarily determine your buying patterns. And so how they can monetize your data. But when you really then look at only six out of 10 people that use the internet actually have an account and a great majority of those who actually have an account on social networks have multiple accounts in order to create what's called puppet accounts to sort of, well, this log on will be my family thing and so I'll only accept friends from this and well, and this will be my work one and I'll never let the two meet. The joke on the internet is, is that you lose your, your job on Facebook and you get anywhere on LinkedIn. The reason is, is that people are trying to figure out how to literally colonize the internet from the real perspective. So we have been working on a platform that uses personas and, and these personas allow you to create and maintain different aspects of your physical and the virtual realm. When you build that, then you start to find that you now have an environment that does what business is doing. And so most of us, I assume, are business owners or have control of our environment. So if we want to give a spouse or a relative an email account, we just call our IT person and tell them to do it, it's on our system. If you work for someone else, they go to Gmail, Yahoo, they go to some other place because you don't really have the access to collaborate using your own stuff. If you don't own it, you have to use something else. Well, Gmail reads every single word and character that goes through it and that's how you get the ads. If you type, you know, a word long enough, you're going to see an ad populate on that. And so people are starting to see that they are losing their privacy for convenience. But if you look at business, and this is where it all comes together, I'm sorry, is that business has learned how to maximize people by allowing them to exchange information, collaboration. So you have a client that calls, it's a customer, he's bought 100 light bulbs before, somebody else answers a phone, they can quickly see, yeah, this guy bought 100 light bulbs and quickly be up to date with the same person that sort of had to maintain the account, you know, from the original concept. Collaboration has, all the businesses that are now starting to go into the internet and really the poster child of the month, I just speak because somebody called Wanderlust and they're out of Berlin, and this is, this makes great sense. Most of the users are in the U.S. This is why Wachula excites me for many reasons. They, they created a simple program that just allows you to create any list you want. And the nice thing is you can share that list with anybody else who has that program. So now you have collaboration outside the business and now you get to see families and others start to really exchange information to use it for the things they need to get done. And so when Blue Water talks about the fact that, you know, they want to bring in information from all these different disparate systems, you know, when you open up your own wallet, you see you have like 50 cards, you know, there's all these sort of little, I mean, if you can bring that together and then allow the husband and the wife and the aunt and uncle and the grandparent down to the grandchild, all of them to actually share that information and exchange it in a safe way that's not being sold, then you have collaboration at a scale that Oracle was built on, that Microsoft was built on, that all this multi-billion dollar industry was built on because it gave them a platform to exchange, to collaborate data. I mean, hence the operating system on the computer that shows us the PowerPoint. We all have PowerPoints, so we get to collaborate with data, plug in the key, and you see a presentation. Imagine that at the personal level, because we don't really have it at the family level. And so when you think about healthcare and you think about legal and you think about some of these things that are tenants to all of us regardless of the language we speak or where we live, it's fundamentally important, but just right now we use the phone, we use, you know, postnotes on the refrigerator, we use all these sort of kind of clever devices to sort of communicate what's going on in our family. And so when you look at the, the internet doing that so easily, when you look at the, the launch of the iPhone, because you can install apps on it, it is a, is a mobile platform, then you see that exchanging data becomes very, very prolific. So when we were asked to build a product on our platform for, for Blue Water, we started talking about customer service and where we would put the people that actually would answer the phone if there was a problem with the software and how to use it. And, and he started talking about Wachula. And then as we met with others and found that you already have this, you know, great, you know, dark fiber that you already have, you know, an internet platform or, you know, infrastructure in place, well, that's all we need. But when we were researching where we were in better customer service, we were going to do it in Oklahoma. And why were we going to do it in Oklahoma? Because most of those jobs are $10 an hour and when somebody answers a phone, they have a nice sweet southern accent, not Indian, not Pakistani, not something that's out of the dialect of where the caller is calling from. So if somebody has a problem, you, you kind of have a disposition of people that talk softly, that are friendly in general, and immediately disarm the caller. But, so Oklahoma and others are creating, you know, sort of new businesses based upon the fact of all the failed attempts of trying to offer a customer service. So as we started to look at this, it's like, well, I mean, Wachula is great, I mean, it's our Oklahoma, you know, 70 miles away from Tampa, it made sense, but when we started thinking about some of the things that LifeDash was going to do also in healthcare, which is FTE-intensive, that it's part of the medical product of when people say, yes, I now have my data going forward on the internet, you know, in Blue Water, but for $20 a month, you can call my physician and mail the chart to Wachula and then, then we would hire medical assistants in Wachula, which we would in theory, you know, um, train at the community colleges three miles away from the preco building, that they would then enter the data and digitalize that chart and now it becomes a collaborative piece of data. So when looking at the preco building and looking at the fact that it wouldn't go dark because of generation, you know, generators and so forth, that it's easy access, you know, that it's close to major metropolitan areas to which we draw from, to which we have literally a training facility here, you know, and even with the grant money, it became just a no-brainer. So part of our discussion with them is that LifeDash and its operations would commit to also put our jobs here in Wachula and so that we could sort of share some of this, you know, kitchen approach that we could, you know, populate the preco building together and that we would bring our forces together in terms of customer service and in terms of the labor that we could use to digitalize some of the data that's out there. And then I would say that lastly, is the platform that we're building, these are people that we hired from Microsoft and PhDs in social media and others, that we have top secret clearance, that we have, you know, we are a platform that will rival Facebook and LinkedIn, we, we don't sell people's data. And so we have a natural API that allows not just Blue Water, but other people to write their applications on our platform and that our browser already speaks 90 different languages, so it's already globalized. And so now we will encourage the people to write the software for our platform to either do one of two things, but their customer service people here in Wachula in what I would call technology building one, as Amy mentioned, is that you have property all around there, you can continue to build buildings off of that area because of the infrastructure of power and data. But if they didn't want to put their own customer service people here, then LifeDash would take a bigger percentage of the application that was sold in their store, we would do their customer service for us, for them, and put that in Wachula. So I think that it makes natural sense, the low cost of labor, the infrastructure in place, just the natural disposition on how people could be trained and then respond to people calling. It, it really kind of seems to be a very much a win-win from what would be my ninth company in terms of sort of my, you know, serial radar, entrepreneurial radar, you know, this is, you know, this is a great opportunity.
Is that finalizing your?
Yes, sir. With that, yes, sir, any questions?
All right. Moving up to the board for any questions if they may have.
As you move forward on this concept that's made a little public, how do they know about this?
There's two ways. One is, I'm sorry, Jamie, you wanted to?
Take it, take it, leave, not follow up.
There, there's two parts. There, there is the commercial sort of marketing and distribution to where Blue Water reaches some of the major payers and as well as the head sort of command and control of what organizes the first responders in the state of Florida. So that sort of commercial effort is taken to the C-suites of the payers within the state of Florida as well into Tallahassee, toward command and control is done and notifying the first responders, don't look for a yellow dot, but look for this. And when you see this, see this card, you know, you can take a picture of the code in the back and, you know, they pull it up. And so, you know, this is now available, that's the commercial side. The, the private side is all about viral marketing. It's about, every person that actually signed up for Blue Water would presumably have a spouse and/or children, so they would become additional owners, which is not represented in the, in the, in the revenue forecast. But then you have aspects of them, that LifeDash at the platform level will import 19 different other social sites data. So when you talk about that 50 cent term out there, it's called social capital. So every keystroke, every picture, everything you've uploaded somewhere is known as your social capital. The ability to export that to, or at least is known as your social capital. The ability to export that or at least sync it back to a platform that you now can control the context of, yes, this picture was at a family reunion, and this picture was deer hunting, and the two really shouldn't meet because they hate that I shoot deer. And so, but your deer buddies are of all different economic groups, and they understand the concept of deer stands and so forth, and these people don't. So you now get, just manage it from one place. Well, that process really gets hold in, in the internet space with bloggers and other people, the, the leaders. So we have 8,000 people that are ready to start to talk about, whether it's blogging or other sorts of things, to say, yes, you know, some people will call it viral marketing, other people would just call it content leaders. So from YouTube, from Facebook, from Google Plus and others, they will know that this is now available. And it's radically different. And then on the marketing side directly with, you know, the people that write notes, so like Beta and Splash and TechCrunch and all these things that you may or may not have heard of, those are the Forbes and GQ and sort of the online magazines to our world. And so they all know about us, and they're waiting each for, you know, quote unquote, the press releases to say that, you know, you know, we're live and these are the cool things you can do. And that guess what, you know, you can set up a persona and put stuff in there, and that it's, it's safe. It's even subpoena proof, which is one other sort of cool stuff that we're not talking about because we're seeking intellectual property patent protection on it. But all of our data is so encrypted that we can't even read it. So that means if somebody says, come, give it to us, we give them only encrypted information. That's what's really hurt Yahoo and Google, that's been sued by the government many times to sort of get access to this, to where say, well, that's my will, you know, that's what I want to do in the event of my death. And so I should own the legal rights for that. And so there's some legislation that's going around that's trying to sort of shift that. But you could never shift that in what's already a public platform. So we're so marketing different, and we have our 8,000 people plus the online magazines ready to go. That's sort of our consumer side marketing, we already have our commercial side, and they both are on some things.
And I think I just want to, to follow up specifically on the Blue Water side. We have a couple of, we have a consulting firm that is nationally known in this arena, and it's listed by name in the front without the last name being revealed because it hasn't been finalized. But they are ready to go. The reality of the viral marketing Travis talked about is that when you start looking at anything that has become something that it now is, I mean, Twitter has now become the most convenient and efficient place to get news in the world. And it never started as that. It started as a way for me to say, look what I'm doing in 140 characters or less. And then all of a sudden Iran happened, and the bin Laden attack was kind of phase two of that. But when somebody is live tweeting the fact that Osama bin Laden is being assassinated in his neighborhood, all of a sudden people start to realize that something is, that the technology is so much more powerful than the users ever envisioned. The second phase, I would say, on top of the 8,000 on the Life Dash side that are ready to go. The law firm that I am currently with and kind of phasing down as this project takes off, does estate planning. And that's kind of where this marriage met, was the fact that we have a lot of elderly clients, a lot of folks in ALS, a lot of folks that are worth quite a bit of money, who may have health ones across the country. They have no way to actively get involved in our healthcare. And when the trust administration comes time, it becomes an absolute nightmare because this document was done here, it wasn't properly executed, we don't know where this document is, this brother's saying that there's another will, this brother's saying this was the original, all of those kind of things. And, and so we have about 3,000 folks that are in an annual program, where they sit down with us on an annual basis, who are currently using a far insufficient version of what we're talking about, that are ready to go. And if you told us on day one that we would have some of the contacts in the marketing world that we have, but that we could have 11,000 to 15,000 folks ready to go, day one, we would tell you that we feel very, very, very comfortable with users starting somewhere in the 10 to 15,000 user range without the commercial side doing anything.
So the baby boomers are your new best friend?
Yeah, and we'll say in the business plan, we, we talked about it. It's, but it's absolutely true. And the reason for that is baby boomers are more likely to have dependence on both sides. And so I probably still have children in school or children in college. You know, I think there's a big misconception over what kind of rights I have as a parent, but the reality is, when my kid turns 18, my kid goes off to college, I'm not much more than Joe Blow unless the doctor knows. And so when my kid gets in a car accident, and he's 500 miles away from home, and I have to drive, rather than digitally sending a healthcare power of attorney or a healthcare surrogate, be on the phone with the doctor, present identification, and be able to treat my kid, so to speak, or make decisions and not have that delay. But the baby boomers also have probably dependent parents. And so the ability for them to learn the sides of that. My, my sister is 42, she has had five children, she has aging parents, as do I. And so, but, but she's in Greenville, South Carolina. She is far and away the smartest person in our family, she is the most impressive person in our family. She has five children, and she has aging parents, she has in-laws who are aging as well. For her to manage soccer schedules, cheerleading schedules, volleyball schedules, and doctor visits for the children, as well as doctors' visits for the parents who are 600 miles away, becomes nearly impossible. And so as they get in there, absolutely, that is far and away our best friend right now.
Just, I, I, I do have a question on funding. And you pointed out that the total request over three years is 7.5 million. Is that correct?
7.25. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes.
Of course, we can make a decision at some point, and as, as we made aware about earlier, we're not going to make a decision at this moment. But if we make a decision to fund the first, that's this board's decision. There could be a different board, year two or year three. What would happen to your company at that point? If we chose to fund year one and year two, there's a different board, or something else has happened in the world that changes things, and we choose not to fund year two, what does that do to your company then? I mean, have you thought that process through?
Yes, sir. But I, I, I think I would actually ask the, the opposite is, is what would happen to Hardy County? Because we will be aggressively raising capital. We are not going to sit back and presume that we can guarantee that even if phase one happens, that phase two and phase three will follow. What we know and what we feel very confident in is that data collaboration and, and user empowerment is something that has never been done. We believe it will be incredibly successful, or we wouldn't be the thousands of hours into this project that we are. The flip side to the question, the reason I say I would ask what would happen to Hardy County, is that when we talk about the partnership, when we talk about phase one building one of the technology park, in, in full respect and deference to board, this company will happen. The question is whether or not it's with Hardy County. The question is, is to what extent the partnership with Hardy County will be. And so when we look around and look at opportunities, we would absolutely like for it to be, and Travis, Travis mentioned it, Hardy County is a no-brainer. We are not going to walk out the door with hopefully an affirmative answer on funding and presume that year two and three are happening and rely on year two and three. And so we will aggressively. We, we, there's a reason that we have already begun some of the design phase and some of the things that we've already begun working on, so that at the day that we can break groundwork, we're ready to go. We have a timeline in place, we have certain deadlines that we'd like to meet as far as being able to show deliverables on the commercial side and being able to close sales on the, on the commercial side. But all of that goes into our ability to succeed. The question you asked about funding in year two and three, I would suggest to this board, all that does is limit our ability to partner with Hardy County. All that does is limit the number of FTEs we can put in Hardy County. And that turns phase one building one of the technology park into the perhaps full project. But, and, and, and please understand in deference when I say that this is happening, this will be going full speed. Our question is whether or not it can be the partnership with Hardy County, hopefully mutually beneficial, hopefully something that you can take around this state to say that this is how committed we are to, to development in our county. And, and we understand that the technology world is a changing, changing market where valuations have made brick and mortar, these valuations look stupid. And it's, it's the ability to diversify what you're doing inside of this county. But to the extent that you ask the question, what will happen to us, we will be continually pursuing additional capital to ensure that we don't hit a point where the lights go off, because we took for granted year one of the partnership that we presumed would be a two or three-year partnership, and it turns out to be a one-year partnership.
Earlier, you mentioned Rapid Systems, sorry, investment in Rapid Systems. How does that impact your decision to look to Hardy County?
You want to take that first?
I mean, I'll, I'll tell you on my side, it's huge. Well, well, I, I think, I'll answer both questions at the same time for my response. One is entrepreneurs love to do what? Love to build. I mean, this is what we do. I mean, we just like creating value where there was none. And it's just, that is our DNA, it's, it's our makeup. The irony of it is, is that the first time I drove into Wachula, and I had Jennifer, which is in the audience, and Jamie in the car, and we were doing it, and I looked at a brick building, and I said, you know what, I give you $5, I give you 30 quarters. I didn't, I'd never even been to Wachula. Well, that's not true. My, my homestead is off of Spring, so I've gone through here for, you know, weddings and funerals, but it's, you know, which definitely every time I ever really go down there, it's, but it's kind of sad. But the, the point I'm saying is that it's, you know, you have agriculture, you have nature, you have natural resources, that you invested in something that allows you to reach the world. And so when you bring in broadband, you do two things. You not only bring it in for the bricks and mortars, but now people start to be using it. They start training indirectly to play and use the internet because it's there. And so what we call out in our 50 cent bill is you're either a technological native or an immigrant. And so the younger kids had computers in school and so forth, a little more native to technology. But when you bring in the infrastructure, they start using it, right? You know, all of a sudden, the cash registers turn from, you know, making noises to all of a sudden, now they're just online, you swipe a credit card, and there just becomes this natural iteration. I want to echo that this, this is happening already with, without Wachula. I just think that my spider senses tell me that there is a way to seed a technology park using your infrastructure and the preco building as that first nice building coming from north. And you have an opportunity to try to say, we have some of our natural resources here, but we're going to start, to start to leverage the rest of the world and our access to it in milliseconds, to bring in data centers, to say, okay, this place where hurricane does come through, it's, it's, it's high tide, it's high, it's high ground, you know, it doesn't get wet, it doesn't stay wet. There's a lot, a lot of natural things from a data and catastrophe standpoint, that really says that, you know, we took what you did with Rapid Systems as sort of a telltale sign that you were moving into the technology realm, and that you were sort of, you know, laying the water, the sewage, you know, in our pernaculum to, to build stuff on. What we're trying to do is to allow people to collaborate, but when they start to collaborate, it's a snowball. There are hundreds of years of data and written form that need to be digitalized, either just simply scanned, or it needs to be big key. That takes thousands of years. Okay? And so when you can truck it in on a two-lane highway called 17, if you go into a fenced-in area, you have chain of control for medical and legal documents, not just for consumers, but think of all the municipalities that need to share data. Let's just think about, like, the Department of Justice. I mean, you get incarcerated in June, now they own you from a healthcare perspective and a legal perspective. If you leave the incarceration, now you're in the public, but maybe because you don't have a job and you have a record, you're going to Medicaid. Medicaid having access to those records and the digital forms saves Medicaid for not having to wonder whether, did we give them immunizations while he or she was in June? Or what if they go on to general population? Then again, sort of the same things. If you invest and sort of create this technology park, people will come here for all the reasons that I've mentioned before. Because it doesn't matter where your computer is, there's 5 million devices that hit the internet every day. 2 billion of those are smartphones. I mean, computers have become mobile. People expect I get my data within two clicks. You got to have server farms. You got to have places where your dark fiber. So if I'm in Chicago and I'm looking to see where the newest pizza place is, then I need to know that Google Maps server is going to give that to you within seconds. And the bottleneck is actually the phone processing information. But there's no reason that stuff came here. I mean, it just makes sense. Matter of fact, one of the reasons that Chicago has great data centers, because they're almost foolproof to natural disasters. Nothing happens in Chicago except wind. And so they can hurricanes, they don't get tornadoes, you know, they get some storms in the lakes, but that's it. So they never get hit with earthquakes or any of these other things. So I think it's a natural sort of progression, that we saw the Rapid Systems having some infrastructure in place, as being, these building blocks and entrepreneurs get excited about saying, well, we've already checked that box, we can check that box. They're already done.
Is the access to our virtual highway here via what we have in place now, Rapid Systems and the pop out there, is that expansive enough to allow the data in and out of what you express as your growth potential?
From Chicago to New York to Canada, Montreal, again. So what you do is that not one, not one server, set of servers, regardless of the pipe, can serve the whole planet. Because, you know, sometimes if you're in the middle, you want to go to Japan, you're not, you're sure to go left or go right, right? And so you strategically put data centers, right now, Life Dash data centers, we're in Norfolk, Virginia, because there's five bases there. So the government has already invested lots of infrastructures in DOD. As part of our discussion, we're going to move those here. And so what is going to be our east coast and mid-America, you know, shortest distance using, using the speed of light, your fiber, you know, would be here. But yeah, I think that you could get a lot of traffic to come here with those infrastructures. And if you went on earthquakes, the worst thing we have is a hurricane. And you can build concrete thick enough to stand to, and it's always very easy. And so, and fiber's not on telephone poles, it's in the ground. So you have some natural resources, wind, so to speak, that you're back. But, you know, for us and Life Dash, because of the Water Partnership, we'll move all our resources here.
And if I can go back real quick, when you, when you asked about the Rapid Systems situation, Travis mentioned one of the projects that we're kind of talking through with, with Department of Corrections, Juvenile Justice, Dick Amo, I listened to a state agency this week explain with great excitement the fact that they are now able to collaborate data from the mid-'90s. Those of us in the private sector were pretty disappointed to know that taxpayer dollars are spent on that sort of collaboration for a number of things. Number one is inaccurate. But number two, that data is completely invaluable in the marketplace. The, the fact of the matter is, when we talk about being able to digitalize, what we're talking about being able to digitalize, there's great value in cost savings and fraud, fraud prevention, and all of those things kind of prospectively. There's tremendous value to that municipality or state, depending on what that kind of data is. So Travis highlighted one of kind of the key things that, that we have lately begun working on, is the fact that we have people who move through society, and it may be on the government side, who go from the Department of Juvenile Justice to the Department of Corrections to Medicaid. Each time those data, each time, every subset of data completely lost, completely, you know, started over. And so when you ask about what Rapid Systems meant, it's, it's the, it's the telltale sign that Hardy County gets it, that when you talk about economic development, we need our restaurants, we need our hotels, but we also need diversity. And so all of these components of a thriving economy, when you talk about successful businesses, all play a role. Some play a role only where they are. And what I mean by that is, if you, if you took the difference between the Best Western on 17 and the Orange Groves, the Orange Groves can serve orange juice anywhere they can get shipped to in a reasonable amount of time. The Best Western is only profitable when people are saying that. They both meet needs, they're just very different needs. And so what Hardy County said to us with Rapid Systems investment was, we understand that we have this component of, of a, of the economy, but we also understand that we need to start beginning investing in the tech world that lets us meet needs far beyond Hardy County, or even the state of Florida, let alone international. And so that was, to us, the biggest message that's in.
This money would literally go into what?
Year one. And, and this is something that we have been, I guess, what, now two weeks, trying to make sure that, you know, anytime you're starting something, there is not, the analogy that Travis likes to use and I've stolen, is that we're trying to get a plane off the runway, and we need enough speed to get off the runway, but, but not too much to fall flat on our face. One of the things that, that obviously we want to be strategic in is phasing and the implementation. We don't want to be paying for a sales force before we have something that can be actually delivered at the commercial level. We don't want to be paying for overhead until we have something that needs to be worked on and actual backsides are in seats. In year one, largely, we are talking the actual construction of the brick and mortar on top of the platform. One of the, one of the questions, I think, earlier, when, when you were talking about Rapid Systems and what it means, to, to make the analogy between us coming in with Rapid Systems, it's no different than the partnership that Blue Water has with Life Dash.
it's no different than the partnership that Blue Water has with Life Dash. Life Dash is a platform that's on the verge of launching. There are some functionality and some great components of the platform before an application is laid. But the analogy there is that you've invested in Rapid Systems and said that, hey, if we have this technology, it's really just the city plant. It's what I said at the outset, that the pipes have been laid, the roads have been paved, but there's nothing actually being built up. And so year one is largely us building up on that. What I can tell you, and to put in perspective, that our year one budget right now has us at 50 cents on the dollar going to actual zeros and ones being typed into a computer. To put that in perspective, a number of companies that are publicly traded are at about 13 cents on the dollar. We feel very, 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 very proud to be able to come back and say that we're at 50 cents on the dollar going to the ones and zeros and the technology because that's really what our asset is.
So basically, just developing that platform itself is going to handle this information?
Yeah, basically, when we had, when you... Yeah, I think the safety split would be to say that less than 10% are executive salaries. I mean, it's only seven. It's very light on the top end. The next 20 points is for overhead, that the actual physical computers that people use and lots of benefits. And all the rest is actually to all of them using their salaries.
Okay, so you discussed the PRECO building. Now that, you would not actually be changing the building yourself and you'd be primarily just developing the...
Well, one of our things would be to take the boot tart off the sun. That's really the short list of the top lists is to, you know, get some branding going. But no, we would be putting customer service there and some of our designers. So, you know, for the next six months, we would probably be working on, you know, rehabilitating the building, so to speak, which we've already had contractors look at it and grateful for everybody who helped coordinate it. Just complete hospitality, it's just awesome. But it works. And so, you know, we would see all the lights on by some.
And then on top of that, there will be money that y'all will be raising within your group through your capitalization process that would actually be going into the same endeavor. It would just be on top of this two and a half million, to whatever the ultimate final number is.
Yeah. The development never stops. I don't know. It doesn't, I mean, you know, right. So, you know, when I was, you know, chief advisor to Oxford Eclipse, which is now my all scripts, you know, we spent $84 million in developments. You know, of course, we had a $3 billion budget, but it wasn't... It never stops because people always want more. That's why there's 300,000 apps on the iPhone. The reason I'm a smile, you're doing us a favor. If you partner with us, the reality of it is, we're going to run that pipeline. We're going to say, Wa Chula, Wa Chula, Wa Chula, this, this, and this, and this. And from the investment community that primarily comes from Chicago, Boston, New York, or Silicon Valley is going to see that as a vote of confidence. And they're also going to see it as if the risk is no longer. So yes, you will see lots of other dollars come in, but we have written obligations that, you know, we are putting our worn bodies in Wa Chula.
So access to the internet system is going to be part and parcel, the most important part of this, to have access to that. The PRECO building has all that pretty much taken care of already. I mean, I realize you'd have to modify the building and build your software and platform, but...
There is a point at which part we may actually max out the bandwidth that's coming to that building via copper. And you may want to look at at some point in the relative near future to possibly, you know, create a direct pipe between your data center and the actual PRECO building. But if it was me, not me, but if it was me, I would use, I would start to look at a land planning right there and say the PRECO building is the center of this new subdivision called Technology Park. And then when you bring that piece of fiber there, then you can use that as your hub to the spokes that would feed the park. So once you say you have that and somebody could conceivably come in and build, you know, 200,000 in the park because all they need is that one piece of fiber back to your pop and then they're connected to the world. I can't even tell you, I kind of laugh about that. That's really cool. There are a lot of states that can't have that bragging right, much less cities. So, I mean, that is a really great event that you have. And one thing, just to make sure to tie up there. When you say, when you ask, just to make sure we're all on the same page, you asked the question, what will that money be going for? And mentioned development of platform. The platform is now, what, nearly $2 million invested in. And so the platform is largely there. It will obviously never stop. And that's where the capital raising never stops to make sure that we can continue to develop. But I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and from a timeline perspective and what is actually needing to be done, the platform is just about there. This is, this is one of the applications being built on top of the platform by an outside third party.
But that also tells me y'all have skin in the game already.
Yeah, 100%.
And I guess I just wanted to kind of get some feel for on top of that, that we're not just, you're not just walking in here from day one saying, you know, we've got this great idea, write us a check and we're going to try it out. And that's not what you're really saying. And I don't get that feel. But I just wanted to kind of get some confirmation from a different perspective.
You've got a large amount of capital invested. You've got three folks that are currently quitting their professions to make a completely different shift. So from a commitment standpoint, from a skin in the game and from a dedication standpoint, we've got entirely too much on the line. And when we say that this is going to happen, it is going to happen. Or we will all be moving on to... But no, the other thing that excites me is that... I took $6 million and turned it into 45 in less than three years. I had it 100% retention on the development staff through four mergers and acquisitions. The band is still together and the band is ready to hear your vote because, again, it adds value to the thing. When we talk about healthcare and all this stuff, we already have the people that have done it. This is not two kids, a pizza box, a basement, a dog. This is just, it is very much professional zoo. You know, are recognized as leaders in their fields. And so the platform is, I mean, iPhone is built. You know, the Blue Water app, when we talk about this, this is what we're... The money that you're funding is funding Blue Water app, right? We have just agreed that if they build the app on our platform as part of trying to help them get funding, we're going to move all of our toys into Wa Chula in the Life Dash standpoint, which is in Tampa and Norfolk, Virginia.
And you've already discussed these issues with the insurance companies and some of these conceptually?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a difficult thing for us, and if I can, you know, Travis and I kind of share the same excitement. To give you just a little bit of background on how this partnership happened, I was originally asked by Travis to be at the initial meetings on what became Life Dash. And for a while, I was going kind of down that path and some career things kind of changed. And so I slowly kind of transitioned to more of a consultant role or friend role than actually involved intimately on a daily basis. So I know the band. I'm incredibly excited. It's not often that you have the opportunity when you're trying to start something that you can go get folks who are naturally known, who are industry leaders, but who have all worked together, like working together and are excited to come back together on another project. That's what is generally exciting. To put it in context with what you're asking as far as development and all those kind of things, just to give you one example, there are companies called Doc Via out in Oklahoma. They have marketed something called the Invisible Bracelet. The Invisible Bracelet is, functionally speaking, a cell phone program where if I am found, somebody can hopefully log into my cell phone, they can hopefully find the keychain that is on my keys. And then they can understand that they have to text a seven digit number, I believe, to another seven digit number to then get information back. They've invested $3.5 million in a little over 18 months. They have 100,000 users. They anticipate being at a million users this year. We quite frankly see it as a tremendous thing that they're seeing growth because on a technological standpoint and on a quality of product perspective, we are talking about absolutely blowing their brains with what we will bring to the marketplace and the development side and the IP side. But the reality is, that traction's there. They had to spend $3.5 million because they didn't have a strategic partnership with a platform already in place and they had to start from scratch. And so if you told me that I had the opportunity to partner with Hardee County and be accountable for what I'm telling you and you asked me if we're going to be successful, certainly as an entrepreneur, you always believe you will be and you don't think the other way, you have to plan the other way. But if you told me that I could go head to head with a company who spent $3.5 million, who has technology that doesn't really match what we're talking about, but also had to start from scratch with a $3.5, build an unknown team with unknown variables, not knowing what they can do, not knowing how they're going to work together, and then assemble a platform. Would you give me a platform and a team of folks that have already worked together and are excited to work together? I think that's where our genuine excitement for building this in Hardee County comes. And the iPhone is bigger than X, right? Bigger than the biggest company on planet Earth in terms of the value, shares traded times what is or can. Platforms are very powerful. There, if you have 300,000 applications that are ready for iPhone, arguably, that's a few hundred thousand companies who write apps. I mean, it's not a full application. Those are siloed data. But just, but they know that they can go to their basement with a pizza box and spend six months writing because the platform did all the work. And all they do, it's counting building, building on a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac and all that other stuff is already there. It's easier to build a house than to doze all the land and prep it. That's the concept when you keep saying platform. So you won't just see Blue Water people here. You'll see other people who build apps on our platform here.
Any other questions?
I hope we didn't bore you to death. I know it's lost its techno-speak. I mean, sometimes it's like, how can I do this maybe in interpretive dance? We have, you know, something, other way to sort of see it and all this stuff.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much. And we'll have a discussion at the end on your request. But we do appreciate you coming here. We appreciate the excitement you bring and we appreciate the opportunity potentially to have jobs in our community that can go on for a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before we go further, we're going to take a five minute recess. Come back at 10:30.
I was asking Casey, how much money do y'all have?
I know. I told Casey, I was like, I need a budget. So I was like, I have like this horrible feeling they're just going to get up there and approve, approve, approve. And I'm going to go, wait a minute. We don't have that much money. Yeah, I know.
And I was sitting there, I was like, it was like, so what's the investment? And I heard that number, I looked at her, Kevin, did I hear that right? Yeah, you did. Holy crap.
I don't, I mean, I don't think they were funded. They'll probably end up funding the renovation of the PRECO building in some similar fashion, you know?
And I had to step out. How many jobs were they talking about freeing over here?
They have said, you know, first ramping up in the low twenties, you know, all the way up to hundreds. Built out, you know, maybe over $1,000. I mean, it's big.
It could be huge.
Yeah. It can really, and even though they talked for a really long time, there's still so much work that public didn't get to hear. And it's huge.
You reckon I could get them to show me how to use my smartphone?
Probably.
I can't even get online, what are you saying?
Oh, worry.
It's really big.
Okay, if you all found, just the way you have, they still can't, you think? Or they kind of get, thanks for no things?
No, they, they, no, they're good.
It could be huge.
Yeah. Not to mention Jamie is the one on the right. The first one to figure, the state representative.
Really? Oh, that helps.
And then there's another partner who is not here today and is also a state representative.
Gotcha. I can always help.
So it's not only beneficial for, you know, them to get help from us, it's beneficial for us to help them.
Yeah.
Yes.
It could be cool.
It's better than rating it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's still one of those things that like totally blows my mind that I don't totally grasp, you know, kind of thing. But... No.
That's probably why.
It's amazing to me that people can, yeah, come up with stuff like this, think of things like this. I watched Social Network the other day for the sex. Well, I saw it in the theater, but we have the movie. And when I was homesick, I watched it.
Is it good?
And I was like, yeah. Like, we saw it in the theater when it first came out. But it's really good and it's just like blows my mind that this kid, you know, did this. You know, after getting mad at his girlfriend, basically.
I never saw the movie, like...
Yeah.
And basically, he's a jerk and his girlfriend broke up with him. So he went home and started blasting her on the internet, basically on his own little blog website that he had that he cast over Harvard. And he was mad and drinking and started bashing her and was like, you know what? All girls are like this. And they decided to have a contest of like rating girls on their hotness. So he started going into the Harvard database and pulling all of the houses' profiles and pictures. And he put them up and had Harvard rate the girls hot or not or whatever. And like...
This guy get death threats?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was hot like. And he actually did it based on what is hotter picture of the girl or a farm animal.
Man.
Yeah.
That's brutal.
It was. That's how this whole thing kind of started. It's weird. Yeah. Strange. I know. His girlfriend was so funny. I love the line that when she's late, maybe she says, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I want you to know that, you know, you will, you will go through life thinking that people don't like you because you're nerdy, because you're, you know, whatever. Socially inept, blah, blah. And she said, I can assure you, it won't be, it will be because of...
I always thought that was so great.
Nice.
I mean, because she's so just like, what, you know, that is absolutely not true. You are more than that.
Are you typing still?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's disgusting that listen.
It's just me.
I pulled this out because I had this like horrible fear that we're going to go through and start going approved, approved, approved.
This one, you got it out of mine?
Yes, yes.
Because I was hunting it and I thought, well, hell, heck, this is the only one that exists anywhere.
It's in the kitchen.
Oh, gosh. That's a fucking asshole. That, that'd be worth just seeing the movie right there.
It was, it was great. It was a great line. And then of course, of course, the most famous line out of it is, you know, because he gets sued by the two twins that claim that they...
Is it Life Space guys?
No, they were wanting to start something called the Harvard.
Yes.
Whatever. And enlisted him to write his book. And so they said that he stole Facebook, the Winco Boss. And when they're in, they're in deposition and stuff, they're sitting across the table going over testimonies. And the Winco bosses are talking about that he stole their ID And the Winco Bosses are talking about that he stole their ID and one of the heated moments and Mark Zuckerberg looks at him and says, if you had wanted to, if you wanted to create Facebook, you would have created Facebook. And that's like the most famous line of the whole thing.
Really?
Yeah.
I like an asshole coming up there.
Look in the back, yeah, in the cooler there's that, I think their side has seen.
Cold in your name, I have a sweater.
Me too, I called Casey. I was late. The director today caught me, was telling me about the kids leaving.
I had to go to the office.
Yeah.
Joe, we're going to fill out this morning.
Oh, Jenny?
We are. Joe has a copy of the county's public records request documents that he's going to give us. No, a copy of like the procedures that the county. He's instructed us that. We're going to come up with an estimate of how much we're going to charge. We're going to present that to him and tell him. Tell him he has to pay, write a check, and give it to us, and it has to cash. Prior to us handing him anything. The copy that we've already made, we need to make an additional copy, we need to keep, which what sense? Yeah, make one whole copy, back copy.
Because I want to stand up so we. Everything except that there's a copy he's made that. Other than that, everything's been scanned. Willis have a scan.
Okay. He wants us to keep a master copy in the office. He said, whatever she's copied so far, do it all over again, and that's when we're starting. Get it after she's done copying the second one. The first one was our copy.
Okay, if we get everybody back in their seats and in their areas, please.
Oh, really?
Okay, a call meeting to order. Next up is Hardy County Board of County Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Morning.
On behalf of Hardy County Board of County Commissioners, I'm here to talk about Hardy Lake and grants to open. We had skin in this game too. We got over $600,000 in grants already for Hardy Lakes. This hopefully takes it to the next step, RV Camp In, which is where a lot of people want to go. I know quite a few members on board are using it. It's, it's a good thing, it's good for the county, good for the economy, bringing tourism. And, you know, this is just another step, there's more to come. There's a lot of offsite courses and everything, Hardy Lake, but this puts it up to the next step. We're going to catch you up on time.
Well, this briefly, I see that it's 60 RV sites, which would include electric water, fire rings, tables, electrical, electricity to the sites, restroom, showers, three stall restroom, three showers for men and women, water plant distribution, some money for the office entrance and camp store, money for roads and for a dump station. That pretty well summarizes what it's.
And that gets us up and going with RV Camp, which is the water and the big bang we're waiting on, and the electric. And this will get us going, puts in the market for RVs.
I would, well, I would assume most of this is for actual capital investment in materials. Labor, the county will provide?
Well, a lot of it, I mean, some of it we will do, we will sub out the bathrooms, I was thinking, on sudden out the concrete work and block work on the bathrooms to, you know, spreading money around in the county to some subcontractors, do what we can.
Any, any questions?
Yes, I've got three quick ones. One, how, how much would this be open, would it be open?
When this goes in place, we'll be open seven days a week.
Okay, so we'll have it manned, so there actually will be more people working?
Add three more employees is where, and that's always been the proposal to get it built out, would be five employees.
Five employees, okay. One of the things, you talked about the development of the water plant and all that, but now, I mean, you talked about a dump station, but what, how are you going to deal, is there going to be any other type of sewer operation out there at all or anything? Or the dump station?
It's the dump station.
It would just be the equivalent of a septic tank where you can dump and go on?
That, we have that at County Park, and we have a dump station at County Park, and that works well. And most RVers, I mean, they're accustomed to doing dump stations.
Well, the state of Florida parks are like that.
All the state parks and the county parks that we've been at, my camps, I camp, Vanessa camps, Lori camps was living room, but I don't like to count that. But most, I can't say that. Most, most of those parks have dump stations, as you well know. That's just a great facility out there. I mean, it's just so underused, it makes my stomach hurt. I mean, it's a great facility.
It will take marketing for, you know, to get it to fully be used and developed, we'll have to do a lot of marketing.
It won't take long.
Won't take long, we, I mean, we have people calling all the time on RV Camp. But when we tell them we're going to have the facilities that they got.
Well, that brings up an interesting point, would y'all, would y'all do it from here, or would you just, like, the state of Florida reserve to reserve America? And, you know, they're, they've got all those sites, and then just reserve it and take care of them? Would you try to do something like that to get it out there?
I mean, there's always.
I think we should look at it, because it makes it real easy. If you want to camp in this part of the state of Florida, they've got a list of everybody that's within, you know, 100 miles of you, or 50 miles of you, it's very easy to make reservation and see if the spot's open, and then reserve it and go on. We've seen this.
I think it's a great next step for what needs to be out there. And, and we know, and anybody who's done any, any type of camping like that, and I, years ago, we tent camped in the Keys, and sunup and sundown, you couldn't go anywhere because of the no seals that carry you away. We don't tent camp anymore, we do other, use other things. But I'm going to tell you that campers spend a lot of money in the surrounding communities. And I suspect this is almost like Field of Dreams, build it, they'll come, it's just going to amaze them, I think.
Is this, being at Hardy Lakes, and Hardy Lakes is one of the locations that's been talked about for the equestrian park, equestrian park, one of the things that's been talked about in the feasibility study that we're looking at for developing the entire good tourism concept. I'm assuming that this is going to work in conjunction with that. They're going to have to have, I mean, if there's an equestrian park out there, they're going to have to have a dump station, right? And all that stuff, and this is going to work in conjunction with that.
Do we have a master plan for Hardy Lakes Park? Is this like just a portion of the master plan? Have you looked at for our development?
Well, most of the master plan has been developed, I mean, I'm, we haven't paid the funds to get, you know, a really nice master plan done. It's developed between the commissioners and the county manager and myself, you know, talking about what we want out there. And I've pretty much laid it out the way, and everybody's agreed with it so far.
Is the site out there where we, we camp normally when we go out there? That, that open area with the, the trees around, the premier roads, is that kind of where you're talking about developing these 60 sites? Or?
Yeah, the bathroom would both go a little further.
Yeah.
Out to the middle of that, across the ditch, there's a ditch across.
Yes, so you know what we're talking about.
That's where the bathroom would be, and then camping would be on both sides, and also across the bathroom from the road, where the bathroom, so there gets its power.
Right.
There's some trees, and that would be 30-inch sites. We, in this, we would also put where the premier camp is, put some 20-inch services in there, just to help the camp.
Now, that, those are not part of the 60.
No. That's not part of the 60, 60 is just 50 inches and more.
One point of note, the, I've had numerous conversations regarding the need to complete or expand the initial planning that was done at the park, and it may be appropriate to consider allocating a portion of the monies that are appropriated to initiate a master plan. And I, I say that having corroborated with Kenley Horn and Kevin Denny. They both have looked at what we have and feel that there is a need, especially if the park is to be considered for equestrian venues, et cetera. So I'm kind of thinking that we either, at some point, it would be wise to make an allocation for master planning. Whether we do it directly from their grant, or do it as an aspect of tourism development, funding remains to be seen. But just want to plant that idea in your mind.
What we heard last week, Rest Bur, last presentation, which was for a vision of Hardy County and to explore some of those ideas, would that not be inclusive in that?
There's a difference in doing the, the marketing tourism development theme and the actual nuts and bolts of implementation of the plan. This would be specific to Hardy Lakes. And of course, Kenley Horn is essentially on contract. That could happen fairly quickly if we decide to appropriate some money and allocate it specifically for that. Doesn't have to happen in this grant, but it's, it needs to be dealt with.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for presenting the information. Okay, the next group is Organic Green Solutions, do we have the representatives?
Morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
My name is. Good morning, all. My name is Jeff Oslender, I'm with David Disgro, who's the president of Organic Green Solutions, and Russ Morley, who's the vice president of communications. We've been working with Bill Lambert for quite a bit of time, a number of months. In fact, it was Bill who introduced me to David here, and helped coalesce our concept plan initially to create a biomass processing plant here in Hardy County. Exciting group of ideas and people got together and promulgated a, an opportunity that we took advantage of. Initially, we were going to work with the Department of Energy and some of their loan guarantees, and perhaps it's a good thing that we didn't, since they've been perhaps off in the proper direction. But I was able to assemble financial resources from new market tax credits, and with your help from Hardy County, as well as the Florida Clean Energy Fund, which is connected to the Florida Opportunity Fund. They have $36 million of grant monies from the Department of Energy and from the state legislature that we're, I believe, going to be the first qualified applicant to tap into. I don't believe in the nine months they've been operating, they've actually been able to close another transaction. But this fits into their overall scheme of things, and we've been able to obtain a leverage loan from them. So we're here to kind of tie together where we are, we've made a presentation to the RBA previously, EDC, I should say. And the expectation is now we'll close about November 15th and get underway. And David will explain a bit of the scope of the project, processing plant. Russ can talk about our, our plan for the marketing of our end product. The throughput will be fuel pellets that will be sold to European utilities. Renewable energy product, but it's, because Florida doesn't have a mandate for renewable energy at this time, the highest interest use for the end product, which will be a processed biomass, vegetative biomass, is to the European utilities that are mandated to take advantage of renewable energy production. Now, we see too that the Japanese government has implemented a renewable energy policy with subsidies, and they've become and will become strongly in the future a big end user for this type of renewable energy product. So the market is, is just astronomical, and we have the ability now to deliver product, I'm sorry, unique in, in the commodity-driven environment that we're in. So let me just turn it over to David to talk about the scale of the project.
Well, I, I think what we're, what we've done is we have assembled proof. Yeah, I, I have three of these books. Oh, yeah. But one of the biggest problems with any biomass undertaking is, is that how do you aggregate your feedstock? And what are the, so that was my initial dilemma. Even though I already, and I'll get into the technology and stuff a little bit, but even though I had the technology, how do you really secure your feedstock? And that's the, the thing that kind of prompted me to basically start the organization called the Sunshine State Biomass Cooperative. And there's a, there's a little card in there that on that explains it. But what there is, is that takes the, the landscape producers, growers, even municipalities can become engaged as members of the cooperative, and essentially, we then are able to aggregate that feedstock and be able to have assurances that we know that we have the raw materials. The raw materials from the vegetative material that we get, and we're not talking about using anything that's treated lumber, we're calling, we actually define this term for the agricultural cooperative in the state legislature, which is basically saying that BBM, or vegetative biomass, is vegetative biomass material for the region of Florida here, that is basically makes up the, essentially the, the types of plants that exist in our area that are maintained through our landscape companies and such. And so what we did is that then we were able to look at that and be able to get some numbers, and Russ can maybe go over a little bit about how much feedstock is in and around the Hardy County area. But the, the big, the idea was, is that, you know, you know, when you talk about ethanol or other types of things, there's a lot of energy that's consumed into that process that makes it only viable that if there's a lot of subsidies from the, from the government. Unlike that, this material, because number one is that our co-op members are currently paying disposal fees, significant amounts of money to get rid of the biomass. So by partnering up with them in the, in the supply of the feedstock, it, number one, it gives us assurances, but also gives us some abilities to gain revenue from the intake of the biomass for the, for transportation of it to the processing facility. And what we're looking to create here in Hardy County, and what we have is the need of, for transportation out, is, is a facility that's going to start out producing in the neighborhood of 30,000 to 60,000 tons. You'll see in there a little, in the back of that, there's a spreadsheet that kind of goes over the, the operational makeup of the, of the plant with income spread out. We also are going to produce our own electricity for the plant, which will actually need to produce between 500 and a megawatt of electricity an hour to run the plant. We're using the vegetative biomass, we, we are, Organic Green Solutions has partnered with a company out of Wichita, Kansas, AESI International, that has the gasification technology that allows us to burn wet-based material. And that's one of the problems, is that when you go to burn this type of material, you have some things to deal with, is that the material, you know, in Florida tends to be wet. And so we can burn up over 50% of the moisture content in that material to produce our gasification. And so we can burn up over 50% of the moisture content in that material to produce our gasification. Again, the feedstock's coming in at a very attractive cost basis. So that makes the production of electricity, if we're producing about a megawatt of electricity an hour yearly, that's probably, if we had to purchase that off of the grid, it would be probably in excess of a million dollars. So by us producing with our own vegetative biomass, we get, we're getting our energy, which is the needs of the production line for the facility. The production line will have two, looking at two, the ability to produce two four-ton an hour production lines of the, produce the bio, pass through them, come in through a dryer system that then goes through grinding prior to that to the dryer, then into the pelletization machine. And why the rail was very important is that we need that for transportation, most likely to the port of exit for the biofuel. But what it does is that, what's happening is, is that these biofuel pellets are being bought. Canadians right now are selling 2.6 million tons a year from Vancouver, British Columbia of wood waste, and sending it all the way over to Europe a year. It's over a $300 million a year business to the British Columbia market over there. So with the Canadians, it's a huge, huge thing with them. We have Florida, I mean, our unique climate, our year-round growth, it just, we have more biomass. I think there's estimates, if you see in there, there's Dr. George Philippides with the Florida University Systems who's been working with us. And, and this is that 30% of all the biomass in the United States is, is in Florida. And literally right now, a lot of this landscape waste is clogging our landfills. It's just, you know, it makes sense that if we can convert it before it composts out, we then capture that energy. And each one of these pellets will have a BTU value between 8,000 and 10,000 BTUs per pound, okay? And the buyers for that in the European market is strictly by that value, okay? That's how they pay for it. So we know that we can produce it, we know that we have buyers for it, we know that we have the feedstock that we'll be able to aggregate. So the beauty of this is that Hardy County and Bill, being that this is a good central location, we can then get the, the land at a, at a good price.
It's all arranged.
Yes, it's all arranged already with the, I think the 13 makers on rail. And I think that this is something that as soon as we can do this, the power companies in Europe also are, are very keen on helping us to grow this. That's another thing. We just got back from being in Europe for the last week, with looking at getting them an off-take agreement to be able to produce this. Well, what does this mean for Hardy County? This means jobs. I mean, this, this plan's going to create good jobs, over a million dollars worth of payroll a year going through the production line. You've got to have people that are going to supervise in the intaking of the material, the processing, and then the people that manage the line, as well as the other administrative people and stuff that will be operating from here. The technology is, even though it's, it's relatively off the shelf, we've kind of married this whole thing in a, in kind of a unique way in that, and again, you know, having these, all these pieces put together, which we've been able to do over the last couple of years. In addition to that, the ash that comes out of our gasifier, it basically contains the elements that were in the plants to begin with. So that ash, because we're not burning treated lumber, we're not burning tires, we're not burning things that will create an, an ash that then is environmentally hazardous, we then, that ash contains the potassium, which I've already had talks with Florida Crystals and Vikes Brothers, I stepped out with, the talk with, which is likes, like, likes ranches, I think they're referred to, are interested in, in, in looking at the concept of, of that ash utilization for using it in their agricultural needs. I've got one other thing that I'll show you. What you have here is, another thing that we're doing is we're putting into this first plant, this new technology, which is going to take and carbonize the material to a higher state. What that does is it brings up the BTUs to of over 10,000 BTUs. It also takes off the volatiles off of the material and helps it to burn. Right now, a coal plant, what they do is they use this material, these wood pellets, to coal fire in coal plants in Europe. They can't use more than 10% wood pellets because it has, the potassium and stuff that's in our native material tends to give problems in the boilers and stuff. This material, by carbonizing it, and we're going to work through this, and we're going to be doing this prototype plant in there to start doing that, it, it will be able to then look at bringing in that in line as we can get that really developed over the next year or so, to bringing actually a higher value of product to the market, even than what we have right now. But that product also is also referred to as, in the agricultural industry, biochar. And biochar, again, it helps to, you can use it in agricultural, organic farming or whatever, to help replace the carbon loss by tilling the soil repeatedly over and over again. And because it contains, again, a lot of the minerals, the potassium, that's another advantage, so that it makes, it makes a good soil amendment also. So we're looking at, looking and exploring the markets for that using, used as a soil amendment also. I guess if you have any questions, I mean, I guess I can.
Go to Russ.
Yeah, Russ, do you want to address it?
Couple of things. First of all, good morning. This is going to be a prototype plant, this is going to be a showcase facility. This is going, we're going to have a lot of people come here, look at this plant. This could be one of as many as 40 around the state. Now, this is going to be a bigger facility than pretty much our other facilities are planning to be. But we're going to bring a lot of people here to look at this plant. Adam Putnam said he'd be here for the ribbon cutting. As did Jeff Atwater. We've been up to Tallahassee with their offices and their folks who are very interested, very supportive of this. I think Dave mentioned, and I may underscore this because I think it's very important, we're not harvesting or killing anything in the, in the processing of this plant. We visited a facility in Cottondale, Florida, just outside of Tallahassee, that produces nearly 500,000 tons of wood pellets per year, all sold to the United Kingdom for power. Swede Space Company, and they harvest pine trees. They actually kill small forests, they compete with pulp paper industry. But we're taking basically haircuts, you know, all the stuff that's clipped on a regular basis. We estimate just the urban wood waste in and around the Hardy County area, and that's the stuff that comes from tree companies like Lewis Tree and Navy Tree and Trees Inc. and those guys, be over 447,000 tons per year. That doesn't include the other materials out there as well. Edg, palm fronds, all the stuff that ends up in your landfill here in Hardy County as well. And I've spoken to her, and I got a landfill manager got a figure from her too, is what they, what they take in per year. So we're really excited about this, I think Hardy County should be excited about this too. We just, our COO just come back, got back from London, already met with fuel brokers over there that regulate letters of intent, you produce it, we'll buy it. There's a ready market for this. Progress Energy is looking at taking the torified material of use, looked at there, and then probably will be a domestic market for this in not too distant future. They want to try to test it in their plant just north of Tampa. We've had conversations with TCO Electric, Progress Energy, New Power, as well as Florida Power and Lightyear, about the possibility of a domestic market for this. So, anything else? Want me to touch on that?
No, I just want to add one thing. And I wanted to follow up as a, on a final comment. The request that we've made of Hardy County is $1.5 million. This will be paired with a tax credit fund, and I'll get to that in second detail, but it's a fund that'll produce $3.6 million from Florida state new market tax credits, one of only two allocations for this year made by the Florida Legislature. And $6.5 million of federal new market tax credits, all issued and funded by the Urban Development Fund managed by Aries Capital in Chicago. And then there's $5 million of proceeds from a loan from the Florida Clean Energy Fund, as I mentioned before, all of which comes together. We're not going to draw down your funds ahead of anyone else's, they'll all be funded through a qualified equity investment fund at closing, so all 10 million will be in place before anything is dispersed. Your funds will go for two things primarily. One is the acquisition of a site that we anticipate for $250,000. And Bill has agreed to construct our onsite buildings, that is to say, he'll hire the contractors locally to construct up to $750,000 worth of structures on the site. So that's what the purpose of the funding will be going towards. So we've been able to essentially obtain 85% funding from other sources, and we're looking for the help from Hardy County on the 1.5.
How much of those sources are out of your pockets?
Well.
Out of your individual pockets?
David's got 400,000 of research and development invested, and will be putting in a couple hundred, 200,000 plus of cash if possible.
Is the?
I have, I have, let me just, with this copy, I brought the 17-page commitment from the Urban Development Fund, so we have this as well.
Well, that was my question. Are the other commitments in place, the other 8.5 million? Are they signed or agreed to, or what is the status of the other 8.5 million?
The full tax credit funded structure is in that file, the 17-page commitment. The commitment fee and signed copy are going out tomorrow. The Florida Clean Energy Fund has come back to us for final responses to a few questions, which will be answered as well by tomorrow, and we've scheduled, as I, I think I indicated, a closing for November 15th. That's the other two parts of the package. But again, we're not asking for any advanced funding from Hardy County, we're all going together to pair up.
Is there any way we can be last in, last out?
Well, yes, but, but only to the extent the cash will go into the closing and it can be held, so it's last out of actual disbursements, yes. But in order to.
Can that be designated as Hardy County's funds or IDA funds, right?
Not sure I follow.
Yeah, I don't know how to, how to do it.
Let me explain the transaction, because it's a little unusual. We create a qualified equity investment fund, it's like a funnel, and all the cash goes in the funnel controlled by the closing attorneys, and then comes out the bottom and it triggers the tax credits that go to US Bancorp. They're the investors, it's in the commitment letter. It's all funded, but it's, it has to go through this final step. That's how we qualify all these tax credits. Your funds can be sequestered at the closing for purposes of paying for the site, paying for the building structures, and any other activities and purposes to be debited against it. So it could go out at the end, at the last disbursements, and that could be provided for an effective protection. But the cash will go in at closing because it has to trigger the tax credits. No, no, well, we're also not asking for a grant. We want this to be structured as a 1% interest-only loan for a number of years. We have it 15, 20 years. And then we'll see how we, we pay it, whether we ask for forgiveness, some forgiveness. But it, it originally started out with a grant, but a grant doesn't help us because it deflates the basis in the debt, and it would lessen the tax rates. So we actually would give you, will pay you an interest per year on the money. And then downstream, we'll figure out what you want to do about the exit strategy.
Yeah. Okay. Comments?
I had a question about the binder that you presented us this morning. What's the relevance of the, of the shareholders and the shares to your, to your plan? Because I see other funding sources up to the 8.5 million dollars, so I'm a little curious about the relevance of the shareholders.
I think I pulled up one of that information, and I just copied it directly.
Yeah, the Florida Opportunity Fund, Clean Energy Fund, wanted to know who the investors were in OGS, Organic Green Solutions. So that was essentially put together for their benefit. Some of the money that was raised early funding that went into R and D and, and related activities, because you asked about how much skin in the game there was, and that's some reflection on that.
No, that didn't include the money that I, I know I mentioned.
So, so then, what would the dollar value of the shares be, so that we can consider that as, as an investment that's already been made in the company?
Well, we ran 60 cents a share.
Yeah, I think it was 60 cents.
60 cents. Is what, nearly a million shares outstanding?
10 million.
No, that was authorized.
Authorized.
You'd only issue.
I think it was issued by the.
Whatever it shows there.
And then, and then my other question would be, and you might have addressed this, so I apologize, but the, the funds from the Clean Energy that you're going to be repaying interest only and from Urban Development, what's the plan for principal reduction on those two?
The funds from Urban Development Fund are tax credit-generated quote-unquote equity funds that are at seven years self-liquidated. In effect, US Bancorp has bought 16.5 million dollars worth of face amount tax credits, discounted in present value for about $3 million gross. And so that's, goes away at, at year seven. The loan from Florida Clean Energy Fund is a first mortgage-type loan, and that'll be repaid or refinanced at year seven. Your funds, which we want evidenced in a note, a subordinated note, secured by whatever we have available in a, in a subordinate framework, would be potentially repaid. We can repay it in 15 years. We didn't ask for forgiveness, you might want to discuss it with us in 15 years, but we'd like a term in that range, and then we can address it. But it would be, originally, I think it was considered as a grant, and we didn't really, grant will hurt us more than it'll help us. So there's a little benefit there, get the money back and recycle it at some point.
Any other questions? Members? Anything further to add, Jim? Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and providing the information on your plans.
You can, you can take a little bit of that, you can burn it, like put a match to it, and you can see how it doesn't smoke or anything, and how much it heats up.
Okay.
Oh, it's good. All right.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Rollform Industries Incorporated. Do we have the representatives from that company, please? Please.
You should be a pitch man for what they actually do. Because it's, I have good work.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Nedeski, and this is Brandon Hill. We're here to represent Rollform Industries. First off, I'd just like to thank the IDA for allowing us to present this opportunity for Hardy County and Hardy County citizens. For anyone who doesn't know me, I'm a lifelong resident of Hardy County. I've grown up here my whole entire life, and I graduated from Hardy High School in 2000. I began my construction career after high school, worked my way through college, and graduating from the University of North Florida in 2006 with a bachelor's degree in construction management and minoring in business administration. After graduating, I moved back here. Our family lives here, and I started working for EO Cook Construction since moving back. Being a lifelong resident of Hardy County, I understand the dynamics of our economy. I understand the challenges. I understand when Mosaic leaves, we're in trouble. And I understand that we need to diversify our economy in order to strengthen it. We need to bring in new businesses, new industries, and sustainable, long-term jobs for now and for the future. And that's exactly what this company will do. That's what we bring to the table. What we're proposing is the construction and operation of a 15,000-square-foot manufacturing warehouse. It'll consist of office space, warehouse space, and manufacturing space. What we're proposing is to manufacture and distribute metal panels and accessories to the construction industry. Our products will be manufactured locally and distributed throughout Florida and eventually the southeastern United States. Short-term, we have many impacts to the local economy. The first is the short-term impact of the construction of the building. This will give the local contractors, subcontractors for us, an immediate boost, and we are fully committed to using local subcontractors and suppliers for this project. So the revenue generated from the destruction will create approximately 18 jobs over the seven months. So we're bringing in an immediate boost right there to, you know, our contractors that desperately need it right now. It'll also bring in a small revenue for the government in the form of permit fees, sewer and water tap fees, and sales taxes for materials purchased for the building, for the construction. Long-term impacts, the main impact is employment. The company will employ 10 to 15 people, what we're projecting over the first five years, and the average pay is going to be $34,500 per person. Most of these positions are in sales, management, and skilled labor. We have very few unskilled labor positions that we can offer, but we can offer high-paying jobs that will allow people to set roots in Hardy County, raise families, and have a future here. We're not competing with any other company in Hardy County. We're not competing with anyone. This is a brand-new industry, and all the jobs created and all the revenues brought in will be a 100% net increase for Hardy County and our labor force. The chart on the screen shows, it's just a representation of the demand for products such as metal roof panels. This is the Southern Region Metal Building Manufacturers Association's sales sheet for 2010. These products, as you can see, Hardy County doesn't have much construction here. This is actually a good thing for us. It's a good thing for Hardy County because we're going to be able to manufacture everything here, not compete with anybody, and drive revenues into Hardy County from sales in other districts. 95% of all of our products will be sold outside of Hardy County. This is going to funnel fresh capital into the county and help long-term, the long-term local economy. Our company's also committed to using local service providers for banking, insurance, accounting, buying our fuel local, electricity, automotive, and marketing and publishing. So we're bringing a boost to Hardy County in the form of jobs and also secondary jobs through service industries already located here and helping existing businesses that are located in Hardy County. We'll generate revenue for the local government. We're estimating the property tax on the development at $16,079,400 a year. So the local government will get a significant portion of that. Also, the five-year projection is showing sales tax revenues of $886,324 for the state and $98,480 for the 1% of the county sales tax on products sold. That's not including, we also have fuel tax we'll pay, tangible, intangibles, income taxes, government fees, and everything else that they're going to hit us with. One of the greatest aspects of this manufacturing facility is that it's going to be environmentally friendly. We don't have byproducts. We don't have anything. We're not melting anything. We're not changing the composition of anything. All we're doing is forming metal foil that we buy, and there's no byproducts, industrial pollution, hazardous runoff, or anything else that we have to contend with. It's safe and effective, and it's, we think it's a perfect match for Hardy County.
Any excess materials up there were completely restockable as well, so...
The grant funds return on investment. This chart represents what we believe will be the impact for the grant funds or what you get in return for investing in our company. Direct salaries and tax-based increases are how we calculated the debt. That being said, after 40 years, we start showing a positive return on investment, and it grows exponentially after that. We're showing the gross impact over five years. Our revenue projections are 13,436,000, 13 million, excuse me, $436,306. Raw material costs will not be affected or not come from Hardy County, obviously. So we have 9.4 million that we'll spend buying products, and that leaves the gross impact to the local economy at $4 million over the first five years. The market in construction right now is pretty lousy. Like I said, I've been in construction for over 10 years now, and it's bad. It's very bad. But there's not anyone who would disagree that it's got to get better. Reconstruction data, the REED Expansion Index, a raw building construction survey, AIA Building Index, and the Florida EDR are all predicting positive growth over the next five to 10 to 20 years. So things are going to get better, and that's good for everybody. The current market share in Florida for metal roof panels and accessories is approximately $93 million. The 2015 forecast is $218 million. So that in itself shows, you know, 100% increase or better in the market over the next five years. So what we're looking to do is invest now when it's somewhat low and be able to really drop sales in the future. Market sector pie chart there is showing the typical roofing materials used. Shingles are the majority. Metal roofing accounts for 27% of all metals, of all roofing material used. And based on our surveys and based on our knowledge in the industry, it's getting better with the increase in fuel costs. Shingle prices are skyrocketing, and metal prices are becoming much more competitive for a project. We conducted a market survey of our own. We called, I believe, close to 50 roofing companies and just asked them some questions about how they feel about what's important to a roofing company, what's important, how would we get your business if we were solicit to you? And 92% said they would switch suppliers for a reduction in cost. 78% said the price is the manufacturer factor when choosing a supplier. And 82% said sales, they're projecting sales increasing for metal over the next five years, which was tremendous. And actually, a number that I was surprised by is that 63% say the economy is improving. So there's a lot of pessimism out there, but there's optimism as well. With grant funding, what we bring to the table is an extremely competitive pricing module. This is a typical 5,000-square-foot barn, and we just picked Wachula for fun when we were asking our competitors what their prices would be. And we were somewhat deceitful, but we work with these guys all the time at EO Cook Construction, and I think it'll be okay. But we just proposed a 5,000-square-foot building, asked them what the prices would be, and this is what it came back at. For galvano panels, Gulf Coast Supply, $6,356 is the cheapest, and based on our pricing modules, our prices would be around $5,409 maintaining profitability. Same thing for painted Maryland metals. Out of Tampa was the best price at $7,752, and our pricing module shows $6,324. So we're going to maximize the profit for our company, but we have the ability with grant funding to beat the pants off anybody else. $947 less for galvano on a 5,000-square-foot barn is huge. There's not a builder in the state that would not jump on that. $1,410 for painted material is also extremely impressive. Our markup on these, in this pricing module, was 25% gross on the panels and 100% on the accessories. So the money's in the accessories. But that's us maintaining profitability. We're going to utilize our industry connections as we start to sell products. EO Cook Construction, we, I buy close to $250,000 in panels and accessories a year. Cobb Roofing, he is ecstatic about this idea, and he buys, Mike told me he buys 500,000 a year. Advanced Roofing, another roofer we work with, 50,000. Intercoastal Builders, 50. All Florida Steel Rectors, 50. Levano Roofing, 100. And Affordable Roofing, 42,000. These guys are extremely, extremely excited about this opportunity for us to supply panels That being said, we have $1,052,000, not guaranteed, but in pretty much potential revenue that we can tap into immediately without any sales, any marketing, any other expenditures. The income statement projection is showing year one revenues at $1,147,000, up to year five at $4,68,000. The first year is kind of funded with the grant funding or no grant funding. It'd show a loss for the investment. After that, we're showing an $80,000 net. Up to year five, we have about a $300,000 net profit on the project. We're not looking, this isn't a get-rich-quick scheme. This isn't a hopes-and-dreams proposal. This is just getting the industry, working hard, busting our butts, and making a little bit of money and bringing jobs to Hardy County. The structure of the corporation, basically, I would become the CEO. Brandon would become the vice president of manufacturing. We'd have sales and marketing staff, office manager, secretary, a production manager, and then warehouse logistics and maintenance staff to help advise me on some business philosophies or strategies or just, you know, for some general counsel. We would have a board of advisors that I could go to and get some direction for the company. And we would like to see, or would like to invite a few members of the IDA to join that board to help look after the interest of the grant as well. The primary marketing strategy for our company is going to be direct sales. Our sales staff is going to go to roofing companies, builders, metal building manufacturers, and we're going to pitch our ideas. So we're going to pitch our products, and we're going to sit down with them, and we're going to talk to them about it, and that's the best way, a face-to-face marketing plan is the best way to get the, to get the sales. We'll also have traditional advertising as well as online marketing, Twitter and Facebook and Craigslist will have accounts for those guys and try to get online marketing for people that we don't have direct contact with. The products that we're going to manufacture will be a SIMRIB and PBR profile metal roof, both in painted and galvano finish. We've secured, we've secured suppliers, excuse me. We've secured, we've secured suppliers, we've secured suppliers for raw stock and they provide the warranty for our product. So, we'll be able to have an industry standard warranty for all of our products that we have and without any liability whatsoever for the warranty. Basically, what happens is on a galvalume finish, the coil manufacturer themselves warranty their product. Our association with that or our liability is only in the fact that we have to write the coil stock on the coil stock number on the sales ticket, so they know what stock it came from. For painted, the paint manufacturer, the primary paint manufacturer in the United States is Valspar. They provide a 25 and a 40-year warranty for all of their painted finishes. Our products will also go through the Florida Product Approval Process and be fully certified for all areas that accept Florida Product Approval. The primary one that doesn't is Miami Dade. So, we won't be able to sell some Miami Dade, but everybody else will. Accessories here, metal trim, filler screws, call mastic, insulation vents, closure strips. We'll be able to provide all these materials to our customers so they have a turnkey product when they go to put the roof on. The trim material we will break in our facility and the screws, insulation, call, that type of stuff we'll buy from suppliers, from sales suppliers. The future development, we're both pretty young. We've got, the sky's the limit. We wanna expand the sales area to the southeastern United States, possibly start importing and exporting metal coils, metal panels and accessories as well. The product line extensions include standing seam roofs, metal decking products, metal building components of fabrication and possibly we're looking at either a partnership with Kirby Buildings or eventually our own line of metal buildings that we can produce here in Hardy County and sell anywhere in the United States. And that's pretty ascertainable, pretty easy to get into considering that we're already doing the half the work. Grant funds, what will the grant funds be used for? We've got $65,000 allocated for the land purchased. The building in construction, $970,000. The equipment includes a roll former, trim brake, slitter, delivery truck, forklift, bridge cap, and decoiler. Comes to $1,473,000. And the thing I want to really stress is that these funds will be fully secured with tangible assets. If anything were to happen to our company, you can go out and sell all the equipment and you still have a building that you could rent back out or sell to someone else. So, it's fully secured and we're taking the risk as far as the operating expenses and the capital for the inventory, computers, office equipment, and startup capital and everything else. So, I think it's a great opportunity. As I said, the startup capital will be provided by us. This is extremely low risk for the industrial development authority and the grant funds and as we've said before, it's a high reward in the fact that in five years we'll have $4 million coming into Hardy County that'll be used and spread throughout the county and boosts us as a company. So, we can build a future with the funding of this project. That's what we have to offer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board members? You said you're not gonna be competing with any manufacturers in Hardy County, but your sales region is other counties, surrounding counties?
Yes, sir.
What manufacturers are there in the surrounding counties?
In the state of Florida, there's approximately 20 manufacturers of these products. There's two or three in Tampa. There's one down in Fort Myers. There's quite a few near the Orlando area, but we're not competing with anyone here. So, any sales that we make are coming in and we're not gonna take, we're not robbing Peter in Hardy County to pay Paul.
Right.
We might be robbing Orlando, but they got enough to go around.
I understand, I understand. I was just curious, you know, was there six manufacturers in Fort Meade? I mean, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
The region.
This is a very difficult time to get started in this type of industry. We've funded one roof manufacturer, not galvalume, and when the bust came, that company went broke. It's a very difficult time. What happens, where's your capital support come from in this downturn in the real estate market, particularly the residential estate market, goes on for another five years?
Well, what we're projecting is that, you know, we're providing $147,000 worth of capital. Now, obviously, that's not gonna be nearly enough to sustain it if we get zero sales, but based on our pricing module, we're thinking the sky's the limit with this.
What happens if you get half the sales you're projecting?
If we get half the sales?
Fifty percent of the sales.
We'll have 50% of the employees.
What about, you have to have the whole amount of sales to cover all the overhead.
Our breakeven?
Except for the, yeah, that's what I'm gonna say.
Our breakeven point for each year is a little over $1 million. We got to drive $1 million for the sales. Now, that's where the industry connections come into place. As bad as it is, as bad as it is, we still have the connections to make and with that pricing module there, we'll still be able to sustain our company.
And I think with the market like it is, with it being down, everybody's, price is a driving factor for everybody. If you don't have the price, you don't need to work. And with this giving us the grant, funding the equipment with the load overhead, and let's provide the startup cost, we can keep our material costs low, which is in time gonna get the real job today. We go, you know, we'll help them choose us over the next five.
There isn't a, there isn't one of the industry marketing leaders out there that's projecting that we're gonna go further down, that we haven't seen the bottom. Now, what I think is interesting?
Let me talk to a banker.
Well, what I think is interesting is, you know, it's not, is it going down further? Is it still headed south? It's how long is it gonna take to get out of this recession? And is it a V-shaped recovery or a U? And we're obviously feeling that it's a U-shaped recovery and, you know, it is bad, but, you know, our company is still strong. Our construction company is still getting jobs. We're still in industry. There's always gonna be an industry for metal panels. You know, everyone in Florida, 30% of the people in Florida got new roofs in 2004. Those new roofs are starting to wear out. Within three years, a shingle roof is, will start having problems after about 10 years. After about 15 years, there'll start being significant leaks and after about 20 years, it's time to replace it. So, that, the fact that we still have industrial development in Florida, the governor's pushing industrial development, manufacturing, commercial sectors are still fairly strong. There is a demand for these products and with the pricing modules that we have, we can fulfill that need.
Just briefly, on the pricing, I understand it is an advantage to you right now. Do you, have you considered, of course, you have other companies that are, this is their line of work already and you're trying to take away from them. If I'm one of the existing businesses, I may look, do I need to adjust my pricing? And do you feel that, based on the knowledge of the industry, that would be hard for them to meet what you can produce it at? Or what's your feeling on that?
I think we'll be very, very, much more capable of beating them with grant funding. With the capital, with the business module, the way it is, we'll be extremely competitive. I don't think anybody can touch us. If we had to go and borrow this money, we would be paying $20,000 a month in a loan. Now, that being said, you put the $20,000 a month into our income statement, our cash flow statement, and we're burnt, we're not, it's not gonna work. And that's what these guys are having to compete with, is that they're, they went out and borrowed the money and spent the money and now they're having to pay back that loan and they can't, they can't compete with us.
Any other questions?
So, y'all would have some investment yourself in this? You were talking about roughly $150,000.
Yes, sir.
One of your, in the back, there's a discussion about somebody, capital shareholders being a stockholder? Is that just somebody else or is that actually a known?
Well, we have, we have, between myself and Brandon, we have some capital. We can raise, we can provide all $150,000 if needed. However, we're looking for investors and we have some that are extremely excited about.
Okay, so I mean, it's, you're going to, but at this moment, there's not a known person who that person is yet. You're still working through that process.
This guy can provide it all to me.
I don't, if you're willing to pay me in excess of, let me calculate here, $20,000 a month borrowed money, I'd cut that in half and still make it off. I don't know, that's quite a bit of money. That's about 15% interest.
Well, what you're not, I think you're, I've talked to Jerry Wooden over in Hartland National Bank about it. Basically, the equipment will be financed over five years is what they would finance the equipment at and that's $500,000 over five years. Then we have a 7% interest at a 15-year amortization, but a five-year balloon to be renegotiated. So, that given said, it's close to $20,000.
I just had a couple of questions for you. You know, I understand your background has been primarily in construction and both of you would be primary managing entities of the company. What experience do you have with production of metal roofing panels?
I'm no roof panelist in the production side, not much with the metal roofing panels. I did used to work for a production company, manufacturing in the, I worked down, starting out in production, then worked my way up through to logistics and then to actual warehouse management, getting over that. It was a different type of manufacturing, but, you know, I mean, it's.
That's gonna be the primary, that's gonna be the primary concern for the company is the logistics aspects of it, the inventory and the building and sales and quality control. The actual production, the company that we buy the equipment from will come in, give us a complete orientation and they're a phone call away to come in. If we have problems with the equipment or anything, they can fix the equipment, but all the equipment is fully automated. What we do is, we have a computer program that will give us a cut sheet on the house or a roof and it'll say you need, you know, 20 panels at 21 foot, 2 inches. That goes directly into the computer. It spits out a 20-foot, 21-foot, 2-inch panel for us and runs the panels themselves. So, the actual manufacturing isn't anything that we actually do, you know, it's all automated. What we have to worry about is the logistical aspects of it.
It's a pretty neat operation.
And then the other question I've had is if we don't choose to award you a grant, what other opportunities for funding do you have or have you investigated?
Well, I don't know what else is out there. This is the first proposal that we made, but, you know, like I said, if we do, if we don't get the grant funds and we have to pay the overhead, the business model is no longer worth it. So, it's no longer feasible.
Hey, Bill, can you come up here and answer some questions for us on this? I mean, they are talking about buying land, you know, building a facility, purchasing machinery and all those. You're gonna be some type of mortgage or a mortgage forgiveness or what? From our perspective, what are we actually looking at? I mean, I realize we got a lot of check if we do it, we'll pass that, what?
My inclination on this project is if we can continue to develop our spec building attempt, that this business would be a very good placement in that building. I have similar concerns about the market, the timing, the fact that pro forma gets precarious without a free contribution. Their entrepreneurial presentation and ability is stellar and I don't wanna quit working with them. I'm just not sure that if we go straightforward and fund them at their request, even that is gonna work in this market. We do have allocation planned for spec buildings and I think at the end of the day, if we can find a way to place them in a spec building with free rent for a period of time and do some type of performance-based note relative to their job creation on the equipment, that's gonna be the highest and best compromise. That's sufficient.
When it comes to the spec buildings, we don't mind moving into a building. We have some pretty high, pretty technical specifications that we need to meet for the building, the electrical systems in the building, for some of the protection systems in the building. We don't mind doing that, but we would like to construct the building being a local contractor and having the ability to help the local economy with the construction of the building. It doesn't, I don't see it helping anyone in this economy to give the construction to someone from out of town.
Any other comments or questions? Gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentations. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a break for moving forward to the next? Okay, the next presentation is from Peace River Exploration. If we could have the representatives for that group, please. Morning. Take your time.
I'm considering going to get some cheeseburgers after we're done, if anybody wants them.
Well, good morning or afternoon, I'm not sure exactly what time it is. I'm Patty Detwiler with Peace River Explorations, and this is Kathleen Rins. She's not allowed to talk. No, I'm kidding. Thank you for allowing us to present. Before, this PowerPoint's just real short and sweet, because you guys know a lot about what we're trying to accomplish in the long term. This is about what we're going to try to accomplish in the short term. And the first thing I want to do is remove from our application the renovation in the north side of the depot. It looks like that will be funded through the EBA, and go through the CRA, kind of like something else that was presented this morning. And then also, the CRA is applied to the idea as well for the renovation back to depot. So Peace River does not have to do that. So we're thankful for that. That leaves the balance of our Unit 1 request, which of course, we love all of that. But in the alternative, I've given you another spreadsheet. But let me just give you a short version of what we're concentrating on. We're trying to advance economic development through tourism. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and we have a, all of our board members are from Hardy County. The Peace River Explorations project is in alignment with the stable Hardy Visioning, the Hardy County Comprehensive Plan, the City of Wachula CRA update, and the Mosaic Developers Agreement. We are a tourism catalyst project, and the Mosaic Developers Agreement states funds may be utilized to investigate, create, and create an economic catalyst project. Why tourism? 82.3 million visitors came to Florida in 2010. Why tourism in our area? There is over 2.4 million who are within one hour's drive of Hardy County. That's just, we just looked at DeSoto, Pope County, Highlands, Manatee, Charlotte, and Hillsborough. With 2.4 million people basically living within an hour of Hardy County, if we could capture 1%, that's 24-plus thousand. 5%, it's 122. And 10%. I know we've given you many figures in the past, and it was hard for you guys to digest all that, but I'm still working on, you know, where all the people can potentially come from. And I know when I lived on the beach, we always wanted to come drive out to the country because it was different. The Mosaic Developers Agreement language allows for visitor tourism development, ecotourism opportunities, and promotion of the county. The rural tourism demand drivers, we have every single one. From outdoor recreation, the festival and events, agriculture, the ecotourism, the scenery, the historic and cultural heritage, the small-town atmosphere, and we have some great state and county parks. Our visitor tourism development is focusing on promotion and marketing of Hardy County. Having events and festivals, Hardy County visitor information on the website, print marketing, signage, video development, and promotional items. There's not one venue that coordinates and collaborates to bring all of these together in an easy manner for tourists or potential guests of our area to find us. The ecotourism opportunities that are already here are great. And they span from Peace River to Hardy Lakes to Pioneer Park, whether it's canoeing, or kayaking, tubing, standing up paddling, the fishing, the fossil hunting, boat races, swimming, nature walks, bicycling, camping, horseback riding, historical structures, wildlife, and the museum down in Pioneer Park. So, promotion of the county, events at City Hall, bringing in, having concerts, speakers, and entertainers. Promotion of the county, having a really good online presence with not only Peace River Explorations, but the Florida Paddling Trails Association, Visit Florida, web links to some of the local attractions that we already have, our concierge service, promotion of the county with additional festivals focusing on fossiline, or we're really excited about doing an orange and blue festival with, during the time the orange blossoms are blooming, and celebrating agriculture. So we already have partnerships with CF Industries, South Florida Community College, the City of Wachula, the GIS mapping company, Established Fossil Hunters, Canoe Round Company, Florida Paddling Trails Association, and Paddle Florida. And the IVA application criteria asks, does the project make our county economy tax base stronger? And I say, yes, it does. We were looking, if we captured 1% of the people that, oh no, it's .001% of the people that just drive our, through our town every day, and they just spend $50, what that additional revenue to the community would be? Whether it's 10,000 people up to 38,000 people that just drive through, that could be $1.9 million to our community. And the, just the sales tax portion of what that would do to our community is listed here. We've taken, if we can get them to stay overnight for a couple nights on weekends and things, and they spend an average of $500, which is, the national average was, what, 964 that we've said in the past? Even if we cut that in half, the economic impact to the community is great. And the, just 1% in the sales tax would be 192,625 to the county. The, our existing tax base will be increased by current business owners extending and developing operations, and potential for investors from inside and outside the community. Does failure to fund the request create impediment to attainment of stronger economy? We say yes. A stronger economy requires jobs, and all data and analysis shows that tourism is labor-intensive and creates employment opportunities. The travel industry jobs have increased by 162,000 in 2010, growing 1.7 times faster than any other sector. 75,000 jobs added by the travel industry in 2011. Hardy County lacks a tourism organization, tourism development organization. And current research shows that rural sightseeing ranks higher than visiting beaches, and three out of four domestic trips are all for leisure purposes. Why have a designated organization? Because it provides the day-to-day administration, it provides accountability to our county, strengthens promotional activities, and it's a focused organization for the community. Peace River Exploration's purpose is to develop program and events and facilities that will encourage and motivate tourists to shop, dine, play, and stay in Hardy County. A tourism development organization provides hospitality, clear information, maps and direction, and simplicity for our visitors. Does the applicant have complimentary investment, capital investment by the client? And we say yes. Peace River Explorations has received financial pledges to ensure financial capacity to carry out project cost until reimbursement. So, I think Hardy County, do you have any more questions? I mean, I didn't go over a whole concept, but basically, our original application will, without the renovation of the north side of depot, would get us into the depot and get us started. The modified numbers that I gave you before we started would basically get a lot of things going, but that would not be enough to actually get us into the depot at this time. But it would get us onto the web, it would get us the mapping, we'd have signage for visitor information, and we'd have several events that are already scheduled for City Hall in January and February, and have an outline for some of the festivals that we want to do. And we will get additional sponsors for these, but this would at least make a, not a splash, but a ripple in our community this year. And if you look at the revenues that we projected for Year 1 and Year 2, if we continue with partnerships and get out there on the website, and start doing the things that we feel that we can do, that we ought to be sustainable just with how we are until we get, to you all get the feasibility and the whole big plan for how towards it's going to look in our community. So we hope you'll consider allowing us to get off the ground and partner with us to get this going as an additional diversity to our economy. So do you have any questions?
Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments?
Your actual request today is, you passed out the sheet in the history?
Approximately. Well, you know I like the other one, but I'm trying to get, go for what would be a possibility. Because in order to have the website, we need to get the print marketing, and even we have a partnership with the GIS company that will put that mapping on our website, and would also help us get mapping to the community that will layer the restaurants, the businesses, and all of the attractions that are already here all around the county. So, I mean, just as a simple example, you know, when we, if we get the RV hookups out of Hardy Lakes, I mean, we want to cross-market Hardy Lakes, Pioneer Park, really make a consolidated effort to market who we already have here. Because there are people that come to our community, but the, what we need to do is encourage them to stay longer and do more things while they're here. Because that's what sustainable tourism is all about.
Yes, my question was just on the sheet. It says, you know, it totals out, it says monthly total is $119.77, year-long total $119.
You got to take out monthly, I'm sorry. All I did was, you know, try to consolidate what we would do, and I, the monthly should come out of there. That was a year, that was yearly. And that includes three events at City Hall and three major festivals.
I was just trying to make sure that's actually-
No, that's, sorry.
Year-long total is $120,000.
Yes. Yeah, that'd be nice, $119,000 now. But when you looked at my other-
It does say the word, but-
I know, I'm sorry. And you are the accountant, so I defer, I made a mistake. If there was any consideration for helping us get computers or other things to get us into the front side of the depot, that would be awesome. But we respect what you all are trying to accomplish and do, and we just want to be a part of that, and try to encourage people to come here now to help the restaurants, the shops, the local attractions while the economy is down.
Patty, one of your last slides that you had mentioned that there had already been investment made into the project by, you know, I'm assuming that you're talking about outside of what the CRA was just awarded to renovate the depot. I'd like to hear more about- I'd like to hear more about what, what has been invested in Peace River Explorations.
Well, the research and development has been over 2,500 hours, which is equal to about $65,000. And then there's been other initial investments for all the filings that we had to do with the state, and get other smaller items that probably totaled about $70,000. And then we had a pledge of $100,000 right now that is unencumbered. And we also had a small donation from someone that I don't, I think wants to remain nameless right now.
And CF Industries actually did a $5,000 award to us for additional startup costs. And they are actually considering during that budget time, let's not, an additional award similar to what they did for the children from the county, or no, sorry, in Hillsborough County. They did $50,000 for five years, and they would consider us for a five-year long-term award. And Mosaic had also said they would consider us, but they deferred on the, they were-
You know, there's a, there's a lot of interest and a lot of, well, our hope was to be able to really cross-market the entire county, be a, the place you want to go to get all the information without being a burden on the individual businesses that may be suffering and confusing. Additional outside marketing, we partnered with Florida Paddling Trails, and got, received designation as Blueway Community from our Hardy County Board of County Commissioners, and then the City of Wachula, St. Doffo, and Bowling Green. Just trying to be a center for coordination of when people want to know, what do you do in Hardy County? This is where you go. And to really tap into the market that was within an hour drive, which would be our local festivals and events. But also, I know after being in the industry here for about, you know, the bed and breakfast industry for the last 11 years, that most of my guests come from Miami, you know, within three and four-hour drive. And no one's really marketing them right now to let them know what we have. And the truth is, there are a lot of people coming here, but they're spending their money before they get here. We need them to spend our money in Hardy County, make those partnerships here, and get that revenue to our shops and people.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you all very much for your presentation. We appreciate you bringing the opportunity to us today.
Thank you.
And since we have a few minutes, I believe, is there, is there something, food?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to take a 15-minute break, grab a snack, and we'll reconvene at that time. So that'll be 12:25.
Is my number correct? That's what we have to phone. I'm nervous.
Well, you say no.
They're just going to go approve, 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 and we're not going to have-
I'll have to give them.
That's what I'm saying. Do they know, do they know these numbers? Do they know what they're working with?
Yes.